Good evening and welcome to the 21st meeting of fiscal year 2025 for the Milton Planning Board. We are meeting remotely this evening and we can begin with introductions. Sean just texted that he is trying to connect, but we'll go ahead and just begin by introducing ourselves on the board and then our staff this evening. Jim?
Jim Davis, member.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Togaya, secretary.
Maggie?
Maggie O'Phill, member.
And myself, Meredith Hall, serving as chair. And with staff this evening, we have Cheyenne.
Cheyenne Fraser, Assistant Director of Planning.
And Julia?
Julia Getman, clerk.
Great. Thank you and good evening all. And Cheyenne and Julia, if you could just keep an eye out for Sean, who is trying to get on and join us and should be with us shortly. At this time, I'd like to now call the meeting to order. First, we have two agenda items this evening. The first item we have is the discussion of our zoning articles. Tonight, I thought because it is most pressing that we get through these tonight so we can get these to the warrant committee, that the one that needs the most work is the ADU since the final regulations came out at 5:00 on the evening of our last meeting. So Cheyenne, if you would like, if you could pull up the working draft that we were working on, sort of the last clean, clean copy. Great. And would the members like to sort of just walk through this real quickly, sort of where we were? For the public, just to bring them up, or do we wish to sort of?
I think.
Continue where we were, where we were last.
Meredith, if we could just quickly run through, just in light of the updated regs, just, I think it's good to start at the top.
Great. Perfect. Okay. All right, so. Been getting up here. Yeah, this all looked great.
The definition of accessory dwelling unit changed a little bit or changed, right?
Right.
So I think we'd need to make it consistent. So can we just look at the very beginning, Cheyenne, of the definition of accessory dwelling unit? Okay. So maybe part of it is just the way it's organized, right? So it said maintained. Did anybody do a comparison of the exact language? So building code instead of state code, so online, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Instead of state, building code, we capitalize and build, so strike the word state and capitalize, building and capitalize code. And then under, after the word short-term rental, is that here somewhere? No, maybe because we, that's handled separately here because of the definition. Okay.
Didn't we talk about getting rid of detached unit?
As a.
In one of the definitions we did, yeah.
Yeah, but before we go down to that one.
Do you think, just if we're trying to match the state regs, do you think we should, I know this is minor, but we have it as, you know, subject to otherwise applicable dimensional and parking requirements that, colon, and then we have I.
Yeah. Formatting, are you talking about Maggie?
Just formatting, and the state has it at ABC.
I think it's probably a good idea to make it consistent. I agree. So Cheyenne, I think you just need to also move those down to separate lines after you're done with the numbering. I wanted to look at this language that Meredith, you had added at the end here.
Yeah, this, this had come from a previous article that we had created.
I just, I'm concerned about making it part of the definition.
Right, yeah. And I think we said, let's just, you know, we can take that out.
Okay, we can take that out. Great. Then I think after that, we need to add a definition for building code that's in the updated regs. So it just says the Massachusetts State Building Code, comma, 780 CMR. I think you can, you see that, Cheyenne, right?
No, I don't see that.
Okay, so, okay, so after the word Massachusetts, just write state, building code, comma, 780 CMR, period.
Oh, yeah.
They don't capitalize state and building code here in this definition. Just Massachusetts is capitalized. Thanks.
You know, I'm, I'm wondering, because all of this, we're gonna have to go through and this is, this has changed since those regs. I'm wondering, Cheyenne, would you be able to pull up the state regs definitions? And we can literally copy that whole section because there's quite a bit in that that we don't have as well as being different, as being different. So if we pull that up, maybe we can do a copy and paste and save time. Is that possible, Cheyenne, to?
Yeah.
I should have, I'm sorry, I should have probably mentioned that earlier to you. Have that ready. Because they had a lot of additional definitions that we did not have.
So while she's doing that, Meredith, and if, did all of you see under use and occupancy restrictions, which is also in the definitions, that we can't have a restriction on the number of occupants beyond what is required by applicable state code? So we, we can't have a number of people per bedroom?
Right, I did see that.
Okay.
So we have to scrap.
Okay.
And there's a couple of other things that we're gonna have to change to.
Okay.
Setbacks under 10,000 square foot lots.
Right. Also, while Cheyenne's doing that, the AG's office has offered to review ADU bylaws before they're adopted, and I was thinking that would be a good idea. I know it's not a lot of time, but it seems to me, once we have, on the other hand, we could wait until the model bylaw is issued and compare it ourselves before we send it in. But I just, I did want to mention that that opportunity is available to us.
Yeah, and the AG, on their website, they do have a portal, so to speak, where you can go and see all the approved bylaws. So I did go and look at those, but they haven't approved any new ADU bylaws. The regs came out, so they are pretty good about, you can see what language they've approved and they haven't, and some language they approved at the end of last year is no longer in the regs. So all those towns have to rewrite it and.
I think what we could do is we could finalize, we could finalize this document, send it over to the warrant committee, have it ready, because we do want to get it on to the February town meeting, but we could ask Cheyenne to send it over and we could green sheet anything that we needed, if we needed to change something. Remove anything that was not appropriate or. But I would like to get that, we need to finalize this tonight so we can get it to the warrant committee. Yeah, they have a lot of other.
So I guess, do we, do we have all of their definitions yet? Not yet.
Not yet, yeah.
So just another general comment is the, how it's handled for non-conforming lots, not being able to restrict that you, an ADU to a conforming lot, or also a minimum lot size. Because those, definitely the minimum lot size is new, which we weren't putting in anyway, but I think just for the public that might be watching. The regulations don't allow for a provision that limits ADUs on a lot size basis or on a non-conforming lot or non-conforming structure basis. We also spoke about utility connections and the regulations do not allow requiring a separate utility connection. So we'll have to look at that provision.
And when, the one thing I noticed, that when we get to it, you know, we've talked about that we are not allowed to add a, you know, if it's within the half mile of parking, you know, an additional parking place for an ADU, but I don't think we put, I don't think we put language in stating that we can restrict it to, to one, if it's outside, that we could have a minimum of one parking place outside of the half mile.
You can't require more than one, but you don't have to limit it to one either, right?
And we didn't put any language in. I think we started to talk about parking, but when we get there, I wanted to revisit that language as well.
There's a note, Cheyenne, you did miss the definition of EO HLC.
Yeah, they added a lot of definitions.
Yeah, there's three full pages.
Should we let, should we maybe move forward and then?
Yes.
Backfill this later? Because this will take Cheyenne, and I appreciate Cheyenne, you're doing this very efficiently, but, but maybe. Sean is saying it seems like he's not a panelist. So let's give Cheyenne a minute to maybe bring Sean in as a panelist.
Is he iPad 2? Is?
He probably.
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe that's why.
There he is.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah, Cheyenne, that's probably my fault, because I think my iPad doesn't identify me as who I am.
No problem.
Your iPad 2?
I'm no iPad 2. My iPad 1 is on a Delta flight someplace.
Okay, good. Thank you for joining us, Sean.
I'm sorry, I could, I've been listening to it all, I just.
Okay, we haven't gotten too far yet. We're on the still definitions. So Cheyenne's gonna, while we move forward, we'll let Cheyenne come in and just fill those so we have all the same definitions as the HLC regulations.
Can I go back to a question that I have that, we just talked briefly about utility connections? And do they, I don't think they said anything specific about a detached ADU. I mean, I, I understand that an ADU within, within the same structure would not have its own utility connections, but I think a detached ADU should have its own utility connections.
I, I read it, interpreted it that we could not require it.
But they don't distinguish it either way, do they? They don't distinguish a detached structure?
No, because they don't have detached even in their definition. So they're just, whether it's attached or detached is just an ADU. They're not distinguishing between them.
Couldn't we add that if, if an ADU is detached?
I don't think it's allowed, as Meredith said.
Well, if they don't.
Because what it says is in the regs, any requirement concerning utilities, safety and emergency access that is more restrictive than is permitted by state requirements, including the fire code. This is one of the things that's considered unreasonable regulation. And then it says, a municipality may not require a separate utility connection such as water, sewer, electric, provided that a separate connection may be required by municipal or regional utility, investor-owned utility, by state law, by a local, regional or state board or commission, or by court order. So I don't know if what you're suggesting fits in.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting it because, to make it restrictive. I'm suggesting it to make it appropriate. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, connect water from one structure to another structure. We're gonna connect waste from one structure to another structure, and that doesn't make sense to me. And nor does it, nor is it typical to extend electrical, you know, from one building to another building. But it's not to be restrictive, it's to be appropriate.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't prohibit that from happening. It's just that you can't require it. So if that's standard practice, then if an applicant came in and with a separate utility request, I don't think that's something that the regulations would prohibit. It's just that it can't be required.
Well, maybe, maybe it's not a requirement, but maybe it should say that utility connections to a detached ADU is subject to the, you know, jurisdiction, the authority having jurisdiction and the utility companies.
Yeah, I, I guess that might fit into that language that's in.
But I don't think we should, I don't think we should present to anybody that you can just connect one building to another building. You know, if someone's looking at an ADU bylaw and, and interpreting that they don't have to bring a utility connection, we may be misleading them. And I think to write language that says that utility connections to an ADU, detached ADU, is subject to the authority having jurisdiction and the utility service providers, I don't think there's any restrictive about that. I think it's informative and probably beneficial.
And I do feel like if we put it in, for some reason the AG doesn't like it, then she will just strike it for harm in adding the clerk.
Sean, and I like that language that you used because it might be out of the control of the homeowner or the tenant and the, you know, it might be the utility company that determines.
At a minimum, it allows an applicant an opportunity to explore it before they get too far down the road and find out that it's required. At a minimum, you know, maybe they'll go to the authority having jurisdiction and they'll say, no problem. You can connect it from one building and maybe the utility company will say that, but I don't think we should mislead people. And I'm not, it might not, mislead might be a, in a correct term, but I think we should prompt people to make sure that they can do what they want to do.
All right, so let's take a look at that when we get to that language. So here we are, we're at C, general conditions and requirements. So 1, 2, we had added that. 3. And 6. All right, I think this is where we, we had said, we know we, the number of occupancy of the ADU shall be limited to a maximum of two residents per bedroom. We're gonna have to take that out. And I'm not sure if we can have the number of bedrooms.
Yeah, that'll have to be on the landlord.
Yeah, I think we have to take both of those out.
But can we go back to number one there? I think there was a change in that language in the reg. Just quickly. All right, just keep going, actually. I'll look for it and then I'll, I'll bring us back to it when I find it.
And this is number 10, utilities such as water, sewer, electricity and gas for the ADU may be on, so we were saying maybe on the same service as the primary dwelling. Is that enough, Sean, or did you want to add further language to that?
Well, I, I still, I still think that it should, you know, where they don't make a distinction here of whether that's applicable to an ADU within a structure or in a separate one. I think we should add language and, and have it read detached or utility connections. Or you, maybe it should read, let's see, utilities for a detached ADU are subject to the authority having jurisdiction and the utility service provider. And I think, Cheyenne, it probably should say for a detached ADU is subject to the requirements of, the requirements of the authority having jurisdiction and the utility service provider.
Did you keep, should, that should be the second sentence?
Probably, yeah. It should not be the lead sentence, yeah.
Utilities such as water, maybe on the same, utilities for a detached.
Or just say utilities for an ADU are subject to the requirements, and then the second sentence would be the utilities such as water, sewer. Would there ever be an incident, instance where an ADU in the primary dwelling, would that require or would they want a separate connection?
For metering purposes, you know, it's, 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 it's easier, but you don't have to. I mean, there's, there are apartments that are, you know, that pay utilities or have utility costs allocated based on square footage or, or another measure, but.
So maybe we shouldn't, in the second sentence, not highlight detached.
Well, maybe what we should do, Maggie, you know, the first sentence, we should add similar language in the first sentence, utilities such as water, sewer, electricity and gas for the ADU may be on the same service as the primary dwelling, you know, subject to the requirements of the authority having jurisdiction.
Then I don't think you need the second sentence.
You could say utilities for a primary as well as detached ADU and just make the qualification the same for both.
But you're just, if you're just referring to an ADU, you're not distinguishing between attached and detached. You don't need the second sentence. The first sentence covers it.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that. I think, Cheyenne, you, you want to add in there the, the utility as well, subject to the requirements of the authority having jurisdiction, subject to the requirements of the authority having jurisdiction and the utility service provider. Then at least what we've done is for, for someone who would like to, to do this, we've at least prompted them to, you know, confirm that they can do what they'd like to do.
And we can see how that's found to be acceptable, so.
Let's, let me read this one more time, because I think, I think what we've said here is that they can be on the same service, subject to the requirements of the authority having jurisdiction and the utility service provider, so, which is fine, but.
Because that's what the regs say, Sean, that's why it's giving a qualifier, but the regs say you can't require it to be otherwise, so.
Right.
I think the qualifier gives you what you were looking for, which is.
Not entirely, no, because this doesn't speak to the detached ADU, you know. I, I would still like to add the language that says that, you know, the utilities for a detached ADU should be subject to the requirements of the authority having jurisdiction and these utilities service provider. Because in this sentence here, we're saying that they can be, you know, we're, we're affirming that they can be the same service, but we, we don't know that for a detached and no one should presume that it could be. And I don't see it as restrictive. I see it as prompting an applicant to confirm. You know, we're not saying that it can't be. We're just saying that it's subject to, you know, those that really should be saying whether it can or cannot. Cheyenne, did you happen to say?
That's the, I mean, on the one hand, it's singling out the utilities, but there's other things that the building officials will have to determine that meet other building code requirements, right? So zoning is only one part of the review for one of these applications to the building department, right?
Correct.
So many of these things about an ADU will have to be confirmed by the building official or the fire chief.
Yeah, I, I don't consider utility connections a small matter. I think it's a really important matter. And, you know, if the AG disagrees with adding the language, they will strike it. But if they don't, I think it's actually good language to have for all parties involved. It's, it's good for our town officials that have to contend with, with, you know, the applications, and it's also good for the applicant that they won't assume something that they shouldn't assume. So I don't see any harm with adding the language separately that says a detached ADU or utility connections for a detached ADU are subject to the requirements, the same language again, Cheyenne, subject to the requirements of the authority having jurisdiction and the utility service provider. I don't see any harm in this at all.
I mean, more information is always better. So
Yeah.
We could go around if it's good or not good. So let's just add it. If it's not good, then she'll strike it.
I'm gonna try and go back.
If you don't want to go back, Cheyenne, I can, I can just, I can help you with this.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so I, we would write utilities for a detached ADU are subject to, and you can copy just what you have written above, the requirements of the authority having jurisdiction and the utility service provider. And you can copy just what you have written above, the requirements of the authority having jurisdiction and the utility service provider. And I think I'd add a couple of words just to help you. Where it says utilities, maybe we should write. Utilities. Connection requirements. Or connections, utility connections. I think that's simple.
Okay. And that was, and that number nine, just to point out, that is where the language of the parking space shall be provided for each ADU located on a lot. The question I had is, do we want to put in any language which. We had in some previous versions, saying that there are no more than five vehicles allowed to be parked. On a. On a lot containing a, a single family.
Well, we can't. Write into this section, something that's intended for single families in general, right? It seems like that would be something that would have to be modified elsewhere.
I mean, it's in our general zoning, I just, you know, if you've, if you have an ADU with. Four college students who want to, you know, and you've got a family parked and then all of a sudden you have more than five vehicles. I just was going to refer. To what our zoning is as far as limit to number of parking cars to be parked.
It's a good thing to put in it because most people don't know that.
Yeah, that's, it was sort of a, I was looking for that language.
Can't make an ADU more restrictive than a family.
Correct.
Stricted in the single family that allows us to restrict it for ADUs.
Yeah, but I think it's five cars for the primary. And then you can't restrict it more than five cars for the ADU. So I read it as this, this allows you a total of 10 if you have an ADU.
I don't think so.
I mean, I, I hope not, but that's the way.
Well, all right, let's, I'll try to look for that language and see, and we can come back to that if we want to add something. I just thought it might be helpful if all of a sudden, you know, somebody has, you know. A lot of cars being parked on the lot that aren't. The building department would have to enforce. So I'll, we'll come back to that if.
In our general bylaws, not our zoning, so are we able to do a search?
Yeah, maybe that's.
And while you're looking for that, on the design standards, number two. There. This provision is more restrictive than, because we don't have a provision like this for primary dwelling, so I'm not sure this would fly. We could say that it's encouraged. So that we draw attention to it, just like the energy efficiency, but. So we should, we could say landscape area isn't. Is encouraged, or it's encouraged to be provided or something like that. And then strike shall be provided.
Do you want me to put the is encouraged where that was?
So let's see.
Say at the end.
Yeah, where shall be provided, that might make sense to put it there. You know, one of the things that came up in the. In the ADU, ADU session that HLC held is that. It was discussed whether a homeowner could put an additional driveway or a curb cut. And I didn't see any restrictions. Such that we might want to add language saying. No additional. Language. An additional driveway or curb cut shall not be added for an ADU.
Well, don't think about. Does that include like an extension of a driveway when you say additional driveway?
No, it would be secondary.
Driveway or no secondary or something like that?
I would say no additional curb cut for the intention of a driveway or for, for a driveway.
Don't you have to go to the ZDA to get permission for a secondary curb cut?
Yeah, you would.
I don't know.
I don't know that either.
I, I believe we've had to do that on some jobs.
Yeah.
I don't know where you have to go, Maggie, but you can't just add a curb cut.
You have, you have to go to the ZDA.
And I think you have to get DPW and police approval first. They have to come out and check it out.
Fire, because then they'll.
As well.
Right.
I think it might, might be easiest just to write, again, I'm gonna go back to that phrase I used earlier on utilities, but, you know. You know, should an additional curb cut be required, it's subject to. You know, the approval of the authority having jurisdiction, you know, and, and if one isn't required, I, I mean, then they obviously wouldn't, but. You know, at least if one is needed to make it work, where, where it was safeguarding the town. That the applicant knows they have to go through whatever channels there are.
Right. Cheyenne, I think that should be a separate standard, so.
I agree with Cheryl.
Thank you.
I think, I think it's significant enough, it should be separate. I agree with Cheryl.
And we also, I think we somehow lost. That all. Staircases, external, all staircases should be enclosed.
Yes, I was wondering, I took that out, Meredith, because we don't have such a requirement on single families to leave, but I guess. A single family doesn't necessarily require a second exit like that, so maybe you're right, it should be added back in. We can see what the AG says about that.
That was in our previous. Sorry, now I don't see that language.
I pulled it up on the left-hand side, is it?
Oh, great, yes, all stairway stories, perfect. Great, so we'll add. I think we should bring that back up.
Do you want it just after number three or?
Yeah, I think that's. Anything else in this section?
So maybe, again, number six. I think I added this one, but I'm not sure that. This is the case for all single families, so maybe it should be from the sidewalk or driveway. It's really about having adequate pedestrian access for the ADU.
Cheyenne, can you scroll down to the, the, just above E? I just wanted to read this once more. The energy efficient features and sustainable materials are encouraged.
You could add, but not required. To that. Again, this is trying to encourage folks to think about this, but it can't be mandated because it's not mandated elsewhere.
How, how does, how doesn't? Wouldn't an ADU be subject, well. To the requirements. To the energy, yeah, but I think there might be a limit. I don't think, this one, so no, I don't think I know it well enough, but. But I'm, I guess what I'm thinking is. We shouldn't build ADUs to a standard lesser than we're trying to build single-family residential homes in terms of energy efficiency.
They would have to meet the, well, here's the thing, there's a trigger for the specialized stretch code. Of 1,000 square feet, so these would fall below it, unless there's other work that is being. Done that would, on the structure, let's say, that would put it over 1,000 square feet.
Yeah, so there might be some situations where it's applicable, but not often.
In, in light of what we've been seeing on the news and the fires in California, would we ever want to encourage? You know, to build with fire retardant materials or, or build with fire prevention strategies? Cause a lot of these ADUs, you're obviously densifying an area.
Yeah, you know, Maggie, the building code. Has restrictions for how, what the materials can be in a fire rating, depending upon how close they are to the property lines and how close they are to other structures. Especially when you have two separate units. And the fire department, I would think, would be taking a look at it with respect to two structures on the property, being able to access the second structure.
So are you saying that the fire department will be included in this review process for every ADU that's built?
I think it's up to, it's subject to the building commissioner making that request. But the building, the, the building code has requirements, so you, you can't, you know, build right on your property line. Like buildings in the past were built right to the property line, but the building code today doesn't allow you to build right on the property line with some. Without fire protective measures on the structure. And the same thing for separation between units, you have to have a fire rating between the, the units. Or a distance between them. So what I'm suggesting is it's already covered in the building code. And you can't put something in the zoning code that's more restrictive than the building code. According to these regs.
Right, so I think it's under the building commissioner to determine.
Yeah, so you, you could actually, you could, you could. Make that known in seven, energy efficient features, sustainable materials are encouraged, but not required unless. Unless the building code. Requires such. At, at least.
I would think it's, and it's building or energy code.
So there you go, that's great, even better. At least what this does is it safeguards us from in the future having to come back and edit a bylaw, you know what I mean? So it'll, it'll be, as, if the code changes, then. They'd be subject to whatever the code changes are, so I think that's, I think that's good language. If the code doesn't require it, the building code doesn't require it or the energy code, then it shouldn't.
And especially with the wildfires, but also with more people driving electric vehicles, you know, and having charging stations. You know, we just need to be careful.
I think that's, I think that reads, I think that reads well.
You might need to look at that, whether building code needs to be capitalized or whether building code should be separate from energy code. Right back to that definition that we had on building code.
And or energy code.
Yeah.
Do we have a definition for energy code? Excuse me.
Well, the building, the energy code does. Fall into the umbrella of the building code. But I, I don't think it hurts to call it out somewhat separately here, but I don't, not sure we need to define it because. In Milton, it's the opt-in. Specialized energy code.
Yeah, it falls in your building, I see what you're saying.
But that could change at some point, right?
No health code.
We could say building code, fire code, energy code, or other applicable code, something like that.
Requiring. Such to be incorporated. So I had one thing on. On C, the existing and proposed. Floor layouts of each building or, or exterior elevations, one of these I think should say to scale. Cause I think we're gonna need to have something, maybe exterior elevations of new and existing buildings to scale.
On number, which one?
On D.
Three D. It's scaled to what? To the primary dwelling?
Yeah.
Well, to. To an architectural scale of. One quarter inch equals a foot. That's standard.
What were the numbers again?
One quarter of an inch equals one foot, zero inches.
He says zero four.
Yeah, one foot dash zero inches. That should be equals one foot after the one quarter inch. And that would go under the floor layouts as well, C.
Like that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And what is the filing fee to be? Who determines that? A N A.
And where does it?
Something we should ask the building department, I think.
And that would go to the.
The ZVA charge is a hundred dollars, right? There's a filing fee of 100.
So the building department generally has a fee depending upon the size of the building.
Uh, and the.
So here, what we could say is as required by the building department. Oh, you mean this is our review though, right? This is just for our review?
Well, it's gonna go to the warrant committee, so.
No, but I mean, this fee is just for the planning department or the planning board review, so the site plan approval. Or is this, no, this is, would be for the building department.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Well, they're asking $12 per thousand.
So isn't it?
On the value of work.
Does the fee traditionally a percentage of the estimated um, cost to build?
I think the problem, if you put it in zoning and the building department changes its figures, you have to go back and change your zoning. I, I still think we should just put it as required by the building department, a filing fee in an amount determined by the building department.
That's fair.
Okay, under F, I wanted to add, um, utilities, including gas and water lines.
And sewer. In some cases.
Gas, water, and sewer lines.
Or septic, well, water, sewer, septic ones, sewer.
And then.
You might wanna, you might wanna include electric, um, just to at least recognize if it's going underground overhead.
And landscaping, including exist, and landscaping, including existing stone walls? Or should we say existing retaining and stone walls?
How about existing hardscape?
Yeah, and that covers it, I think. That would also show the driveway and.
Yeah, patio, anything.
Parking.
You think that would, stone walls would be put on there? I just, we know how.
You could call that out, but I think we should add driveway where parking is.
Existing hards.
Now that I see this.
Including existing, say maybe drives, yeah, hardscape. And stone walls.
Yeah, but stone walls.
I do feel like stone walls get.
Why not?
Forgotten. Which was an issue that Tim pointed out that we should always have triggered in our site plan review as well, so we should remember these items. Great. You know what? Did we have in here, and we probably skimmed over it, um, but we wanted to address, um, setbacks. And when we talked about non-conforming structures that they should meet the requirements of zoning, where was that? Because we do wanna address a lot that's less than 10,000 10,000 square feet or less, um. It wasn't in the definitions, it would be.
It'd be under general conditions and requirements.
General condition, you're right, that's.
That's number five.
Number five, yeah. So here, yeah, so here we should add something on a lot 10,000 square feet or less. A minimum setback of, here, let's actually, let me pull up the regs. Or somebody have the regs in front of them?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
Cause we should use exactly the same language that are in the regs.
Um, it looks like they talk about setbacks twice or three times, including the definition.
Yeah, it's where it refers to a lot, uh, 10,000 square feet or less. Further down, I think. Yeah, I think it's under further down, always. Refer to under non-conforming, maybe. Yeah, it's not the pre-existing non-conforming, not there.
Yeah, those of those only show up in a definition and then, um.
Yeah, it was under, I think it was under non, um, regulations that cannot be imposed, maybe, um. Maybe it's towards, further towards the end. It's that, I know. Well, our pre-existing non-conforming.
Did you see it?
Any setbacks? No, I'm, I'm not seeing it right now.
No, I saw it before too, Meredith.
Let me just, um.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything that references 10,000 square feet, but pre-existing non-conforming.
A lot 10,000 square feet or less.
Maybe, liar version?
I think so, cause even when I search 10,000, 10,000 doesn't come up in here.
Okay, so, hmm. So maybe that was removed? Okay, maybe I was looking at it earlier. I thought I, it was what?
I'm with you, Meredith, cause I remember seeing that too.
It was on the website, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it now.
You're one word. Okay. Maybe we should check to see if that's something that's been removed, but.
I think it's a dimensional standard, right?
Yeah. And reasonable regulations.
Dimensional standards.
That's strange, um. Cause I definitely saw that in there before. Although we know things change, this. I'm not seeing it now. Okay. All right, I'll keep looking, but why don't we, all right. Okay. We can keep scrolling down. There's process, we were site plan requirements. Use some dimensional requirements. Okay. Did anyone have anything else? On the ADU?
Um, we have a hand raised.
Okay. All right, let's see. Okay, we, um, have Mr. Doherty raising his hand. Um, if you could unmute and you're welcome to join us for comment.
Oh, hi, it's Tom Doherty. I just have one comment on the, on the one definition. If, if you would go back to the definition of subway station, it's been taken from, I guess, the, uh.
Yes.
From the other source.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think that the reference, any stops along the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority red line is taken from, uh, the, uh, HLC's definition in connection, uh, you know, with, with the, uh, o- other matter that we're addressing.
Right.
And, um,
Including any extensions.
Yeah, so I have two thoughts. One is, since, uh, there is no subway station in, in Milton of, of any, uh, I'd say real and practical sense. Now, so first, is that definition necessary in connection with, um, Milton's ADU? If it were necessary, then I think it would have, you know, you'd wanna think about um, the reference to any stops along the MBTA red line, because as you know, when you look at how the, uh, HLC treats it, they treat the red line as in fact, that, that the, uh, let's say, uh, the, the trolley stops are, uh, part of the red line and there's, and those stops are part of the subway station and, uh, that therefore is why, uh, the classification of Milton, you know, in connection with the, uh, multifamily zoning is, uh, somehow therefore, uh, you know, permitting and requiring a 25% uh, multifamily zoning, uh, for that. So my first reaction when I saw that is i- i- if Milton doesn't have any subway stations in reality, does, is the definition even necessary? I don't know, but if, uh, if, if a definition is necessary, I don't think this one is helpful in terms of the way, uh, HLC tries to use it in other settings.
I, um, Meredith, if I could. I, I 100% agree with what Mr. Doherty is saying. You know, at a minimum, I think we should take out the definition, but if we're gonna write that same definition into our bylaw, uh, we, we are essentially accepting that definition. I think it's very, you know, last time we had a planning board meeting, I suggested that extreme care should be taken with regard to that particular topic. Uh, but this is, this is, this is giving the state, what the state wants us, uh, to accept. You know, if any one of us just Googles, um, subway, what, what the definition reads, an underground electric railroad. So I think all of us understand that that trolley line is not an underground electric railroad. So I think it's a mistake, and I'm glad Mr. Doherty's brought this to our attention. I think it's a mistake to write language in here that's not, um, the true definition of what a subway is.
We have another hand as well.
Yeah, I, and I agree, I, I, that's something I meant to flag earlier, so my apologies. Um, in one way, we could maybe look at that is just to, um, not put in all the definitions, we could put in, uh, transit, a transit station, a subway station, commuter rail station, ferry terminal, or bus station.
So my fear about not having definition is they would default to what HLC has. So maybe I'm incorrect in that assumption. Um, so I would think that maybe we should have a definition, and I too Googled subway station just now. As any of the stops along the MBT red line, orange line, or blue line, any fixed, fixed platform serving as a point of embarkation for passengers that provides year-round service for high-capacity MBTA mass transit vehicles that regularly travel into and through subways. So I think we should put our, I do think maybe we should have a definition in there. I don't know what it should be, but.
Hey, Meredith?
Yes, I.
Uh, we have two more hands raised. We have Erica Kinsman and Kathleen O'Donnell.
Great, I just didn't know if there were any other, well, cause we certainly, we, well, we have somebody right now who's speaking. Did anybody have any other questions?
On this topic, I would like to hear from the other two, and then I have a comment myself. We've afforded Mr. Doherty an opportunity to speak.
Yeah. Yeah, is there anything else, uh, Mr. Doherty, that you would like to add? But thank you for bringing that, um, relevant point up.
Well, I just would, uh, agree with, uh, Maggie Oldfield, that, 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 that additional wording, uh, that has been added, um, even to, uh, the, the wording I talked about is just additionally problematical. And, and I would agree that I think that if there's to be a definition, it would be simply an underground or an electric railroad, if, if needed.
Okay, thank you. Um, Kathleen O'Donnell, if you'd like to.
Yes, um, thank you very much, Chair Paul. I just wanted to point out that, um, the accessory dwelling unit provisions are now in the Dover amendment, you know, they are sort of, they are protected use. Um, and the you, ADUs that are smaller than 900 square feet get to be done as a right. You do not get to change the dis, the descriptions of where these can be, you don't get to change the definitions. Um, those are done by the state. And so you can certainly try to do that, but I think the attorney general's just gonna throw your whole bylaw out. Um, I, I admit that Mr. Doherty is right, that this is a different definition of what subway stations and bus stations and all those kinds of things can be. They actually are broader in these regulations than they are in the MBTA zoning. But that doesn't change the fact that this is a, this is now, um, a permitted use and allowed use, like a church or a building or a school or that, any other thing that's, um, protected by the. um, protected by the Dover amendment. So I don't think you're allowed to be able to change those, those descriptions. I don't think there's any point in putting those definitions in the bylaw since you're going to be referring to the regulations anyway. Um, but that's just kind of an editorial comment about why you don't need to repeat things that are already going to be applied to this project to be, these kinds of applications anyway. But you don't get to pick what the definitions are supposed to be. Those are what are in the regs and they're as a right.
Thank you. I just want to comment because really what Kathleen's saying is they, most of these are irrelevant. The only one that is relevant is the bus, um, as it affects the, the parking, um, allowed parking use or requirement. So we consider taking those, maybe we just consider taking everything out.
I just wouldn't put, I don't see the point of putting in the definitions if you could just say as defined in the regs, period. I mean, it's sort of an editorial thing. Why clog up your bylaw with a bunch of stuff that's already in the regs someplace else?
Yeah.
Let's remember the reason that there's a definition here is that you cannot mandate a parking space for ADUs that are within a half mile. So we can put whatever we want here, but when someone applies under the, as Kathleen mentioned, uh, the state will look at, let's just say the building commissioner requires a parking space if, for an ADU within a half mile of the trolley stops. And, um, the applicant says you can't do that and would, you know, appeal that. And so, you know, it's, it's the, if we say that we were going to mandate a parking space within a half mile of the trolley stations, that is nonsense. It's nonsensical. People within a half mile of the trolley station are the best places not to require parking space. So that's the whole purpose of this definition here is, is, it only has to do with parking space requirements. That's it.
Yeah, but I think by using subway station, you, you, I think it's to Sean's point, you set a precedent where you're starting to accept the state telling us that the MBT, that the trolley is rapid transit. And until that fight is extinguished, I would not want to set that precedent or help the state in any way setting that precedent. So I'd, I'd like to see it altered or out. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying.
Maybe we just take these out for, yeah.
I, I would say for the parking, if you don't want to use a definite, for the parking requirement, a half mile of a subway station, just say half mile of a trolley or a bus stop, the trolley station or a bus stop, because that's all we really need to focus on for this point. But I'd like to hear also Mr. Hockenson's comment.
Well, Cheryl, before we go to, before we go to Mr. Hockenson, could, how about a half mile from transit? The transit could be bus or, you know, trolley or, or anything, right? Would that, would that capture?
Subway, commuter rail, ferry or bus station. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm opposed to writing this definition in there to continue to do what doesn't seem reasonable, right? That, remember this language was just edited recently. You know, it's, it's a continued effort to try to, uh, to try to characterize something that's not a subway as a subway. So I understand what you're saying, Cheryl.
I would still say, Sean, that we should be specific in the, where the parking section is and, and say trolley.
Okay, trolley's fine. I'm, I'm totally good with, I'm totally good with trolley. I'll go with that. Sure.
Can I just have something to say about the Dover amendment? So in my personal experience, um, there have been um, whereas as a right and even my business, I have two aspects to my business, a nursery use and a landscaping use, and my nursery use is a Dover protect. When I had to, um, apply for a landscaping permit, I had to give up my protected use to be able to do landscaping. So I am, I am getting off track. I understand that. But a precedent has been set already in Milton that, um, that, um, you, you can, the town apparently can get to pick certain definitions. Um, that are applied over. So I, I am, you know, I'm just, um, I just get a little bit frustrated when Dover amendment uses get thrown away around. It doesn't seem to apply to all protected uses. So that's just my side note.
Okay. Um, all right, uh, if we can let Mr. Hockenson speak now. Can introduce yourself and unmute.
Hi, thank you. Um, I, I agree with the intent of including somewhere in the bylaw, whether you say trolley or something else, because that, the, the parking exception is critical to have in places that are more transit oriented. I think that that's a uh, aspect that should be kept within the bylaw. I understand the, the board's reluctance to use the definition that's been provided. I think that that is why we have the definitions is so that we all agree on, on what is being defined. Because while Google or our common usage for many years may say one thing about what a subway is or isn't. If you look at Wikipedia, the list of MBTA subway stations or stops, it includes all of the trolley ones. So I think we can all pick and choose, but I think that letting these definitions be what they are supposed to be and pointing to those is what's important. But letting the state define what is a subway or what is a station is their job. They are the transportation planners and I think that you will find that HLC or any other state agency will respond to what they say in order to achieve the policy goals that they've outlined, which is increasing housing opportunities in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Okay. So if we go back, um, we would want to eliminate a lot of these, um, eliminate, let's see, because they're, they're sort of scattered throughout here. We want to, before we have Cheyenne start deleting, we would want to delete subway station. Let's see. Um, are we leaving?
I don't think you need to include. If, if we go to the, the top of these definitions, um, I don't know that we need to include all of these in this bylaw. So let's just start with, we want to define building code. I think that's fine.
Bus station, that's fine.
Station seems commuter rail station is fine because we have those as well. Design standards, um, we have them here in this section, so I guess that's okay to keep.
Yeah.
We don't need to have a ferry terminal, I don't think. This, uh,
Yep, I agree.
Floor area, um, we can eliminate the black portion because that was the old part. And the, the new part was, um, is up more up to date, and I think we should have that. Historic district because we may come back and, and have one of those. I think lot, modular dwelling. I don't think we need definition of municipality.
I agree.
I don't think we need prohibited regulation. I don't think we need the protected because that comes, that's the Dover amendment aspect of it. We're not using special permit here. When, so I don't think we need that. I don't think we need transit authority. I don't think we need transit station. Or regulation. Or unreasonable regulation. Or or that next to the use in occupancy or the zoning. The question is, do we want to put something for trolley or do we, can we go to the parking section and look at? That's the one place that it's referenced. Or I think it's under, I think it's just above the design under the, uh, general conditions or something like that, general. So from, we, that says transit station, so we'd want to say from a bus stop, commuter rail station or red line trolley station.
Or Matapan, it's really not.
Or Matapan High Speed Line Trolley Station or Station.
I mean, if it gets
I like trolley.
Hey, keep it general. What if it gets
Trolley stop. I'd say trolley stop.
Is bus stop or bus, is that the way the definition works? Is that called bus stop? It says bus station under definitions. I'd just say, all right, I guess trolley stop is okay.
Any other definitions that anybody?
Do you want to go back just to run through them one more time now that we have?
Yeah, let's do that, yeah. It's a good idea.
Well, we took out the definition of transit authority, but it is referenced here in the bus station. So I think we probably need to add that back in. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm fine with leaving that back in because
Yeah.
Transit station.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, can you scroll back up to where the bus station was, Cheyenne? Thank you.
That's what I'm wondering whether we should say subway station to be consistent rather than trolley stop?
Although we don't have a subway station arguably, but we do have a trolley.
Right, that's why the question is. Do we want to be consistent with? All right, that's fine. Trolley stop is, I'm fine with that.
I think it may come back from the AG that that needs to be changed, but.
Of course, it's gonna, that'll be no surprise. At least we're not setting a precedent and just accepting it.
So in that, in light of that, should we just take these out then? Should we, should we not?
Sorry, Meredith, can we just put trolley station rather than stop? I think stop
Trolley station. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, stations typically are manned where they collect fares, but
Bus stations are not manned, though.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't
They collect the fare on the bus?
I don't think it's a trolley station.
I think it's a trolley stop. The trolley stops.
I think a station is more a fixed platform.
Well, the trolley has a fixed platform. It's where you pick up, it's where you get on the, the trolley.
Bus stop.
It's more fixed on the trolley than it is on a bus stop.
That's why they're bus stops.
For a bus, just a sign for the bus.
Trolley stop.
But they use bus station in their language.
She just said bus stop. They're, it's, you know, whatever. It's fine.
And it's not whatever that
The trolley's, you're right. It's a trolley stop. I'd, I'd say keep it trolley stop.
It's matter.
Yeah, I don't know if it matters because it's, yeah.
I think it should be consistent.
Yeah, never, I've lived in this town for 56 years. I've never called it a trolley station.
But we've never called them bus stations. You know, we call them bus stops. So it's just making the language consistent with what the definitions are, except that, I mean, I'm, I was fine living it at subway. Um, but you folks wanted to change from subway to trolley. I, I still think the rest of it is consistent language is, is a station. It's a place where what you um, access one of these modes of transportation.
Well, I mean, there are definitions set by the state that were recently changed by the state. That's what bothers me the most.
Uh, I'm just advocating for um, calling it what it is, and I don't believe in just creating definitions that serve the purposes of whatever they're trying to achieve. So we, we can, we can discuss that probably all night, but that is a trolley. It is not a subway. And most reasonable people. So I have never heard of a trolley station either. I've heard of a trolley stop. But let's make a decision and keep moving.
I vote for trolley stop. That's my decision.
And I like bus stop. Because bus station is like Quincy bus station.
Well, now you're going to be taking away another definition, which is, look at the definition that's contained in here.
But if, Cheryl, if you stop and you, if you, if you're catching the bus down at the library, do you consider that a station?
It's not about whether I consider something a stop or a station. The, the HLC has issued these regs, their law, and they have these definitions. And I know, I understand the reasons why you, um, other members of the board have taken some exception to the definition of subway because it relates to MBTA communities. But we're not taking exception to any other definition uh, that has been provided by the state. And there's lots of definitions here. And so I just think it's good, this whole thing is going to be kicked out if we try and rewrite the definitions of every one of this, of HLC's definitions in these regulations.
Would it be, would it, would it have a resolution to remove bus station, commuter rail station, trolley station and just put transit station in?
But you would need a definition of transit.
And and we do have that in here.
Like having bus station, I, I, I would think that you're actually limiting. Um, because Milton doesn't have a bus station, but Milton has a bunch of bus stops.
It's based on the definition, we do, based on their definition, we do have bus stations. I understand. Most people think of a station as being Quincy Center.
They're putting a location serving, it's a point of embarkation for any bus is what they're determining a bus station to be.
I can tell you by that, in my work into, as an architect, when I look at zoning codes in other communities, um, I always look at to the definition section because one community will have a different definition for a term than another community will have. And so, um, you know, what one of us thinks is the right term uh, for a point of embarkation is really not relevant. It's, it's what the state has decided for this, these regulations.
I mean, I, I do think going back to the bus station definition is just a location serving as a point of embarkation for any bus operated by a transit authority. That to me is pretty simple.
Pretty clear. And that's why I said trolley station is by def, by, if you, by comparison, it's a point of embarkation for the trolley.
All right, so let's leave it.
I've never called it a
I've never, yeah, I know.
I've never called a trolley station a trolley station. It's always been a trolley stop. It's a train station.
And a bus, it's also been a, yeah, it's been a bus stop. It's a
Yeah. And once again, you don't want to set a precedent while we're still having arguments with the state. We just start using their definitions. It's just like seceding. I mean.
I don't know who's still having arguments because there's no lawsuit decisions as far as I understand that the town has taken. And until that time, these are regulations that we're bound to.
Well, we're in compliance right now, but that's a whole nother argument, Cheryl. I'd like to just have to say trolley stop.
We're, we've been, we've been asked to write a bylaw, which is going to be submitted to the state. I think, you know, some of this discussion we're having now was prompted by a question that our resident, Mr. Doherty brought up. And if we're submitting something to the state. I don't feel comfortable submitting something with a definition that, that we're not required to include. If they come back and tell us we have to have definitions and they tell us what the definitions are, well, maybe that's the way it's going to be. But I don't believe we should submit definitions that we don't feel comfortable with. So. Especially where the definitions are part of a definition that's used in a different matter. That is, is still. Being. It's unresolved that other matter.
I, I think trolley, saying trolley station is less. It'll, it'll be less controversial. Let's just say that.
Trolley stop is less controversial.
Well, for the state. Sorry.
So are we keeping it as station or stop?
I think station just seems consistent with the other. Terms, but. I'm, but I'm up for, yeah, whatever the board feels.
Well, I feel putting it as a, as the word stop instead of the word station. But I'm not going to stay here all night and argue about it.
And I like stop better.
So there's two.
I had already said my position. I should, I think it should be station, but.
There's one for station.
Two.
Sean, do you have a preference?
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use the reference I always have in my 60 years, trolley stop.
Okay, so we'll put trolley stop, commuter station or trolley stop. Okay. All right, so let's scroll through the rest of the. Okay. Um, so if there's nothing else. Cheyenne, would you be able to just send out a clean copy? Of this to the board tomorrow?
Yep.
And so if there's anything that anybody picks up that maybe will want to change, but other than that, I think I would. I'm ready to entertain a motion to, to move to send this zoning article to the warrant committee?
I'll make a motion to send the ADU zoning article to the warrant committee.
As a final draft. Okay.
As a final draft.
All right, is there a second?
Yep, second.
Okay, I will do a roll call.
Meredith?
Yeah.
Can we have a discussion for a moment?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Is it the other members understanding that? We view this as a placeholder until we receive the model bylaw from HLC?
And we're not going to have it in time. I think we have to, in order to get this on the February town meeting, we have to submit this.
Understood, but. But before the town meeting, before the town meeting?
If we need to add a green sheet on something, yeah, if we, we need to write, but we have all the regulations. So I think. We don't need to conform to the model bylaw if we're following the regulations that the state has provided for us. If there's something that stands out that we want to change, we can do a green sheet, but this has to be our final draft that we're putting, putting forth. To town meeting. And give it, we can't. I, I think that, that a warrant committee, they need to begin reviewing this, and I don't want to switch out a whole entire new article. When we've spent so much time and work on this, because we, we may have things that, that model bylaw does not have. But that are. Within the states. That are, that are absolutely appropriate to put in, so. But I certainly would want to review it. And if there's a green sheet, you know, if we want to make any changes or amendments that are minor amendments. I, I certainly would think that we, we would be welcome to do that. Any other comments from the board?
I support sending this to the warrant committee.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. And let's do a roll call. Sean?
Sorry, I hit myself on mute. Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
A Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. And again, if we see anything last minute that we want to tweet, you know, before it goes to the warrant committee. But Cheyenne, would you be able to send this out to our members and forward a draft to the chair of the warrant committee?
Yes, I'll do that.
And to Nick. Yeah, and to send it to Nick, too.
Meredith?
Yes.
I'd like to suggest that we send it to the AG's office for review.
Certainly, that's.
As, as an opportunity is available to us for that as soon as possible.
And actually, Peter Mello, we would want to send it to. To actually Peter Mello and then let Peter Mello make a determination. He may want to send it to Mass Municipal. But I think we should send it to Peter Mello and let him determine who should review.
I agree with that.
Okay. And if he thinks it should go to the AG, you know, certainly that, but I, I think we should have town council determine. But. Okay, so we now can move, and let's try to move through the site plan. And Peter Mello's comments that he shared with us. Some of these are very minor. Some may need a little bit more discussion. Cheyenne, if you could pull up the site plan approval.
Yep.
Our clean article. With, with his, with the comments from Peter Mello. So this was, so number three was his first comment. And when I read this, yeah, sorry. I think we can really just say interior work causing any change of use or size. Shall be excluded.
Well, also a different use, it says there. So any change of use or a different use or an increase in size. I don't see why we would need it for a decrease in size.
Or a different use.
I think different use is what we were.
So I don't, I don't think we need to say. Well, we said a change of use in the beginning. So if we say a change of use or size. I don't think it's relevant whether it's a commercial building. Because what we're, what we're ultimately saying is, you could say change of use or size. Shall be excluded from this site plan review requirement with the exception of a restaurant, bar, or entertainment use. So it's almost, we're addressing what type of uses would be excluded.
But if you're, if you're increasing the size, now you're saying it's excluded. So. If you're increasing the size of a restaurant at the marketplace, it's excluded from site plan review by that change.
No, I'm, I'm saying it's a change of size. Any cha, any change of size.
Yeah, but see, it's a shall be excluded. You might want to say shall be included then instead of excluded, see.
No, it's, it's the exception.
Right, but if you're saying any interior work. Right now, what that said was it's excluded from site plan review with the exception of a restaurant, bar, or entertainment. So it's only. But if it's an increase in size of anything else, it doesn't. All right, so, so it's excluded.
And say this is for interior, interior work only.
Yeah.
So we're not, we don't want site plan.
Right, true. I think it was good, though, actually was fine the way it was, I actually think, but. Well, except what you could say is increase, decrease in area. And, and go back to excluded.
But do you think we need, or a different type of?
Yeah, because if it goes from, if it goes from. Let's say dental office to a clothing store, does that, doesn't need to come to us for review?
No, that's why we're excluding it. But. I, I guess it does, it's, to me, it doesn't matter if it's a commercial building because we're saying. The only time it's going to come back before us, if it's a restaurant, bar, or entertainment.
All right, so it's excluded. Go back to that, yeah.
It just seems like it's a little too wordy, but.
All right, so if you said or size and you get rid of increase and decrease, is that what you're suggesting? All right, and then. Then in areas not needed then?
And I think, or a different use of a commercial building. Because. That would be not relevant. Yeah.
Okay.
That just seemed to sort of simplify. I think that was what. Peter was commenting on. But the next item is should, I'm fine with might. He thought that might. Be better. I don't know what others think.
Yes, I think that's fine. I understand his point.
So might instead of should, Cheyenne? The next two pages look to be fine. Impacts on public service. So. I did read these comments, and I'm wondering if we should. Because I understand the intention, if we should just take this out.
Well, I think if Peter thinks we should take it out, then we should.
Yeah. And then. Down at R. Maybe we just have in this section period and not put in the purview of the board.
I agree.
Just end up there. And then on B vehicular access. We could say twenty four feet for development with. It would be more than 10 parking spaces, but actually.
With 10 or more.
10 or, right, with 10 or more. And 12 feet for development with less than 10 parking spaces. Yeah. I think that was it for that page. So he had a question on this, Cheryl, and I actually didn't know the answer to this. Is that fine to just leave as is?
Defined and established, well. It seemed. Do we need, in a definition section, some name of a document? I, I think. That would risk being, have to be revised in the future, you know, if a name of a document that re, that. Sets these standards or guidelines. If you were to look these up, you would find them. So I, I guess I'm not sure what else we would want to add, except something in a definition. But I'm not sure that.
Yeah, I think what he was saying, are, are there, are there clear definitions if you looked these up? Are they sufficient?
I believe so. Yeah.
That's what I, that's my understanding as well. They're clear. So I, I think those are fine to leave. And then transformer and generators. I think we just needed an and there.
Yes, agreed.
Resiliency and sustainability. I'm wondering if just on this, I like the, the first sentence, but maybe we take projects must identify site and building strategies.
That's, that's what actually gives, they just need to do a narrative. They need to tell us what they're doing to address these. Which if you don't require, if you don't require them to identify what they're doing, then I don't know how you know what they're doing. So first they have to identify what thing, you know, their site or their proposed project. It's really for, applies to larger projects. And so I can see. You know, that this may not apply to some smaller scale projects. Let's say. For example, Milton Marketplace's application is before us, but if this were a larger project under. You know, let's just say MBTA community zoning, then depending upon the site where it's located. You know, extreme heat, well, maybe that strategy is, you know, shade trees in the parking lots to help. With. You know. Heat island, or maybe it's a. the heat island, or maybe it's a reflective roof surface to, um reflect again heat there. I mean, it's extreme participation, precipitation might be something about gathering a stormwater or rainwater to use in a rainwater garden or something. I mean, they don't have to be complicated things. Like
Right.
they just have to tell us what, what they can do with their project. There may be a lot more sophisticated than that too in a large project.
Right. I'm fine with that. Did anyone else have any comments if we want to just leave it as is?
Yeah, I'd just leave it as is.
Okay. So under W, he had greatest extent possible. I think we could say reasonable.
Or reasonably possible.
Reasonably, yeah. Reasonably possible, yeah.
So like reasonably possible, is that for, like, if the site allows for it? Is that like fine, if the applicant can financially do it? What's reasonably possible? What is that?
I think it's something like, let's just say it was a site that had a lot of ledge. Um, or you might not be able to do some, um, rain garden type of, um stormwater. Green infrastructure.
I sort of liked to the extent possible. I thought that was fine, actually, but.
Maybe we just leave it then.
So it doesn't have to do with financial. We ever consider financial?
So.
We do. I, I think we consider things that are, because we.
I think these are actually cheaper in some, some instances than doing the structure. Think about that really large underground stormwater systems that you've retained it, or stormwater retention system that you find underground on projects. Um, those are like Walcott Woods when they took apart the whole front field to put those in. It's a lot of a lot of effort to do that. Whereas these, I mean, a rain garden, a pollinator garden, a bio soil by comparison are I think less expensive.
Let's just keep to the extent possible. I think that's I think that's fine. And there was one more. This, I didn't know if Sean, if you had any suggestions on this, or um, Cheryl, if you had any further thoughts on his comments. Or Maggie and Jim, obviously.
So, and you know, the idea of this is, um to respond to the situation that's already exists rather than the zoning that's in place because there might be pre-existing non-conforming setbacks at the front. And, um but if you have buildings that already meet the zoning, then the proposal should meet the zoning. But if you have buildings that you want to align with, that are out of compliance, that you can align with those. That's common in zoning. Um, that you can align with the buildings that are adjacent to you. So whether it can be rewritten, I think the concept is valid.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I think Peter is correct that um, it is, the language is confusing. However, yeah, the concept is correct. So I don't have I'm not sure how to make it less confusing.
It's clear if you read it more than once, right? At first it may sound confusing, but to me, um you could say, instead of saying dimensional standards, you could say front yard setback. Because that's really what you're talking about. Because right above it, it says minimum front yard requirement.
That might be helpful, what you, that change.
I think, I think the language is fine. It's just maybe a little, it could be ordered differently and it'd be probably read well. You know, where, after where it says infill lots, if we wrote infill buildings should meet the requirements of each sub-district's you know, um, setback requirements. Period. And then read after that, if the adjacent buildings are set back a distance that exceeds the minimum front yard requirements. Um, infill buildings may match the setback line of either adjacent building or an average of the setback of the two buildings. I, I just, I just think if we take that sentence that says infill buildings shall meet the requirements for each sub, that probably should be established right after infill lots. Cause you know, then it opens up the possibility that if those adjacent lots are set back further than the standard, we're creating the opportunity to either be similar to that or, uh, be the average of the two. Does that make sense? I, I just think it's just.
Oh, do you have specific language you want to recommend?
Yeah, well, what, what I'm saying is, so after the comma in the first sentence, right, it reads infill buildings shall meet the requirement of each sub, sub-district's front yard setback. I think that if you copy that, uh, Cheyenne and you paste that in right after infill lots. Up top, yep, there you go, right in there. So that's established, right? That infill buildings shall meet the requirements of each sub-district's front yard setbacks. And then we create the opportunity for something different. Unless, maybe it should say unless the adjacent buildings are set back a distance that exceeds the minimum front yard requirements. You could probably take out otherwise now. Infill buildings may match the setback line of either adjacent building or an average of setback of the two buildings to provide consistency along the street.
Well, here it would be not exceeds, but, um, is less than.
Less than, okay, I agree. Is it less than or greater than, Cheryl?
It's less than because if if you're saying, I, I mean, you always have an opportunity to set a building back further than the front yard setback, right? That's sort of a given.
Correct.
So if you want to, if the buildings next to you are closer to the street, then what the required zoning is, you want to be able to match those.
Right.
So you're giving an exception to the zoning requirement. So I don't, I think unless should not be capitalized here. Um, and it should be a comma instead of a period there.
After the K, Cheyenne?
Yeah. And you could say it is. In which case infill buildings may match. So, uh, yeah, yeah. So after the word requirements, yeah, right there inward, so let me just say. In that case, infill buildings may match the setback line. Et cetera.
You said in which case?
In which case, right. Then I think the rest of that stays.
A long sentence.
True. You could end to that requirement and you could say in that case infill buildings may, or in something like that.
The words.
You know, I'm sorry, Cheyenne, could you just go back to what we, where we just were? I just wanted to see the punctuation at the end. Yeah. Of the two building along the street period. It just needed a period. Sorry. Thank you. That's um, okay. Go down. We just heard. Where he said the board may reject any plan.
Materials here.
Sorry, materials. And I was trying to remember what this, um.
Yeah, I don't remember what the. Maybe a mixed use, mixed use kind of application, but I really don't know, remember what materials that would be.
Should we just take this out?
Take it out, I think.
Yeah. I think we should keep this. I, I feel like this is sort of the only basis that you can reject is for standards for health, safety, welfare and amenities appropriate to the needs of the persons.
Yeah, I think Peter just would need to advise us a little bit more about this. I mean, could be problematic. Um does he support us sending this to the AG once, if, if it passes town meeting, or does he think it needs a modification? I guess I I would want a little more information from him.
This is saying that we, that we can never reject any site plan approval.
I don't think we can.
I, I think it's difficult. I think you can. I think it's, it has to be a significant reason.
This is in our current zoning. But whether that, because it's been there for a long time, whether it would still meet requirements, I guess we could find out.
Yeah, we should ask.
Isn't it, um, similar to like a 40B that it, an application could be rejected if, um if there are local concerns, and I think the local concerns are exactly what's stated here. And it is not just for the community, but it is also for the residents of whatever project it is. Isn't that a local concern?
The way I understand site plan review is they're coming to us with a buy right project. And we're putting additional restrictions on it, but we can't really restrict it. We can guide them. But we can't stop it. Now, I think the only way we can stop it is in our initial administrative procedures where we have to require them to do a traffic study and, and environmental and stuff like that. And if they don't get all that paperwork in, we can, we can reject the special permit. But I mean, submitted, it'll be interesting to see what comes back.
Well, maybe we, we do ask Peter for further information on this, on whether we should just eliminate this.
Yeah, I mean, I think he says it, it could be problematic. You know, I, he's town council, so I think he should advise us whether he thinks it is problematic and we should remove, remove it. Or whether he thinks it's okay to leave it and get the AG's take on it.
Yeah, yeah.
I really think it's his call.
I agree. Okay. Did anybody have anything else on this?
The only question I had was whether ADUs can be subject to this. We've included ADUs in the very beginning. I think we can leave it in for now, but it is something I think that could become problematic.
Well, the gym, if this is as per as of right, ADUs are considered as of right. So I would think that they should be subjected to that.
Right, they, they can be subject to site plan approval. But whether I, I think we've left in here, the pre-application conference, we've left in here waivers. Because you know, some of these things wouldn't be required. And, and I don't think really we have an opportunity to say no for a Dover amendment use. So whether we have it for other things, like in the commercial districts for a business that's coming for that, this purpose or a mixed use development, I think it's different than Dover use.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
So if Peter had advice for us as to carve out something for protected or Dover amendment uses, I think I that might be beneficial.
Yep, to add language.
Because then maybe in that C, in C there, maybe that gets split. Or there's something that addresses Dover amendment protected uses in that. But it still applies to other applications under site plan review.
Yeah. All right, Cheyenne, would you be able to follow up? Um, with town council on that to see if we, if we could address that, his concerns with, with adding a Dover amendment language?
Yes.
Do that. Specifically, okay. All right, anything?
That's all I have.
Anything else? Okay, um, so we can, um, if I could have a motion to move this, uh, article for site plan approval um, for review to both, um to Nick, um Peter Mello, town council, and to the warrant committee?
So moved.
Oh, there you go. Second.
All in favor? All right, Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie? You're muted, Maggie. Sorry.
Yeah, yes.
Sorry. Yeah, I can see your mouth move it. Um, and myself, yes. Great. Thank you so much. Um, so those two articles and we have, um, we haven't voted finally, uh, formally. But our map article has been all set. And I think that's on the schedule for the warrant committee to review, but maybe we should just take a formal vote to send, make sure that that has been sent to.
Do we actually have the map, the, the final map for the Brook Road? I don't know that we got a, did we get a final map for each of these?
Um, I did see it in my printed materials because they, I was wanting to make sure they made that correction where they had one Elliot sort of outlined in purple, sort of those, um.
But there was also a problem with the Brook Road that included some, but properties that weren't actually in the district.
I've got it both.
It's got edited.
Pretty good.
Those did get edited? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I looked at them both.
All right, that's great.
Yeah.
Were those in the folder?
I think so, the updated.
Okay.
I have a printed version and it looks good. Good, good.
Okay.
Yeah, it should have two parcels. D116.
I see it now, thank you.
It's a lot of sixteen thousand five hundred seventy-seven and four thousand three two five. Nine Thatcher Street and three Laurel Road.
Yeah, that, that's all that's on the map, exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
So with that, just a, you know, a formal motion that we've moved that forward for, um, submitted to the warrant committee. Um, just a vote on that, let's, um.
What is this called? The zoning map amendment? Zoning map amendment? No.
Yeah, it is called.
Right? To include Milton Village Planted Development Brook Road over the district. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to move the zoning map, including Milton Village Planted Development and Brook Road overlay district to the warrant committee for review.
A second.
Rule call. Uh, Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great. Okay. So those three are submitted to the warrant committee formally and um so we can now move to just the only other item on our agenda for tonight is discussion of the MBTA communities' action plan. And we can begin looking at that. And there was um some comments that were sent to us from Mr. Dougherty. And if you just want to address your comments, and then we can discuss the board and we can sort of walk through our action plan and how we best approach um response.
Um, I guess my opinion and probably a bit of a continuation of what I said in our last planning board meeting. I think Mr. Dougherty has uh I think we should follow Tom's suggestion. You know, as I said in our last planning board meeting, Mr. Dougherty uh has come before the board a number of times. And um I certainly have uh I have the highest of respect for his um legal mind. And uh he's come before us numerous times. And we have yet to hear from anybody that um disagreed with Tom's legal reasoning. Uh, it makes it makes uh very good sense to me. And um I feel like we should uh take Tom's suggestion and follow it.
I think we're in a very difficult position right now um as the board who has been asked to draft an an action plan and complete a form before the comment period is over and the regulations have been properly promulgated. So it is asking the the way that action plan has been drafted. It requires us to commit to something that is, I believe, premature. Um, I believe that we would like to demonstrate that we would like to work with the state, but to to commit ourselves to doing something. Um, I I would like to for us to you know, respond in some way. Um, Tom had some language that he prepared to add as an appendix and a sort of a comment. Um, as we know, we're going to have to we're going to have to speak with um the select board on this because I think, you know, whatever we do, um, we want to work you know, together with the select board. Um, Nick Milano has been asked to sign off on this and draft a letter. There's there's it's it's more complicated than just simply sending an action plan or putting our comments in. Um, perhaps tonight, you know, and I want Cheryl, I see your hand up um, for everybody to comment, but but maybe we walk through the action plan for those who are watching who might not realize what is being asked. Um, what is being asked of the planning board um as far in the town, as far as commenting on an action plan. It has just come out that the comment period is going to be from July, uh, excuse me, from January thirty first to February twenty first. So we again have twenty days to a very brief time for a public comment. Um, and any any data, any information to be reviewed. This almost seems like HLC is assuming that they're not going to make any changes and they're really not going to listen to anyone. It for them to ask for an action plan before the comment period is over. It just, to me, um it does not make sense that we would have an action plan when the comment period won't even be over by the time the deadline um exists. Um, in terms of compliance, um certainly I expect to have something, you know, by July. But um, but I think it's, I I think this is absolutely inappropriate to be asked to commit to an action plan which is um which is prior to the comment period. It just, it it is absolutely against everything that the SJC has required the state to do. It's as if they're completely ignoring the SJC in trying to work around um the requirements of the APA, you know, the proper promulgations of the regulations. So I don't even think it's legal what they're asking us to do. Um, and I'm not a lawyer, but I I think we should respond that this is um it's not appropriate at this time. Um, and that, you know, Milton and any other town should not be seen as noncompliant. When the when the public hearing, you know, the public process has not happened yet. So um I'll open it up to the other, um, my board members for their comments as well. Um, Cheryl, I see your hand up, and I know there's people in the public who would like to comment, so.
Uh, yes.
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, I appreciate that Mr. Dougherty has spent a lot of time thinking about this. Uh, but Mr. Dougherty um is not town council. He's not been retained by the town um to advise the planning board. Um, there are other members of the public who are also attorneys who have their hands raised, who I would like to be afforded the same opportunity as Mr. Dougherty to address the board uh with their thoughts about this. My understanding is that the emergency regulations are in fact the law and that um the law, those emergency regulations uh require us, as per the letter that Nick Milano received um yesterday, in which we were all forwarded, that Milton is required to submit its action plan by February thirteenth, or it will be deemed to be out of compliance and ineligible for the grant programs that are outlined in the letter. And also that we would be ineligible for those um if we don't submit compliant zoning by the deadline of July fourteenth. So I'm not an attorney either, but I asked if town council has been advising. Um, this um action plan is required to be submitted by the town administrator. Uh, if the town does not intend to comply with the law, I don't think the planning board can make that determination. That's a select board item. It seems to me our responsibility is to review um and provide comment about how we would comply with the law, not whether we should comply with the law or not. And at this point, I would like to hear from the two other attorneys who would like to provide comments to the board.
Okay, first, we're going to hear from our, the other board members and then I'll then I'll go to the public. Um, Jim, you had your hand up on next.
Thank you, Meredith. Um, yeah, I like Cheryl. I'm not a lawyer either, but um if you read the action plan that Tim filled out in twenty twenty three, it, you know, his answers really tie us to a twenty five percent plan and compliance. And I know that the legislature has I think there's maybe almost thirty bills that are pending. Either amending the MBTA three A law or repealing it altogether. And it's not just from one legislator. I think it's from almost twenty different legislatures um from different communities that are affected by this. And there's even some interest in in central and western Mass on this thing. So I think for us to fill this out the way Tim did um is is just irresponsible at this point with so much left on the table. I mean, I agree with um with Meredith that I almost think that the way the dates are set up where we have to set up this action plan and commit before the um regs are even final or before there's there's public input is just wrong. Um, and and Mr. Dougherty's, thank God for that. Um his template spells out exactly what we should do, and I actually agree with it. And, you know, there aren't too many towns that get the benefit of a Tom Dougherty. I know there are other lawyers in town, but he's pretty good on this subject, and I I am going to listen to him. That's all I have for now. Madam Chair, thank you.
Great. And Maggie, you had your hand up next.
Oh, yes. So um so first I just have a question before we actually go through the action plan. Um, so my understanding is that Nick Milano as the municipal CEO is legally committing to leading the process to adopt this required zoning. And I'm wondering if he does that. Um, he, not wondering, but he would be acting in direct opposition of the will of the people and disregarding the voices of the community. So I'm wondering if he does that, would there be a response from groups or individuals? Um, you know, which the, you know, recalls could be initiated, um you know, which is a concern to me. And it's my understanding that Nick Milano can't guarantee that um that um that this, that the decision to adopt any amendments to comply because this goes to town meeting. So how can Nick? You know, certify and I would be nervous if I was Nick to certify, yes, I'm going to bring something to you, HLC, because he can't certify that because that falls within town meeting, I think. Um, so I don't know how he can sign this. I'm just looking out for Nick. Um, so can he sign that? Because can he sign it promising HLC to bring something when it in fact has to be approved by town meeting?
Anything else, Maggie?
Oh, no. So that's um my question. Um, and also um and just the situation is complex and um there are too many variables to make a really full informed decision. Um, you know, especially when um our our obligations are still unclear. So right now, town council has not advised us. You know, he has not invited us to have a conversation with him about this. Um, so right now, um, Tom Dougherty is really the only one who has um given us sort of a roadmap. Um, so as for now, that is um I, you know, I I agree with his um his path forward.
Meredith, can I just make a?
Yeah, I didn't know if you had your hand still up.
Yeah, so I just want to um just make a correction, I think, to what Maggie said. Um, the statement needs to say, and this is quote from the action plan form. It is the full intention of the town administrator to take necessary actions to bring any zoning intended to comply with all requirements of general law, chapter forty eight, section three A and seven sixty CMR seventy two to a vote of the municipality's legislative body in the timeframe described in this action and to submit a district compliance application to EO HLC no later than October thirteenth, twenty twenty five. And so it's not saying that he's delivering it. He's saying he he's he's committing to bring it to a vote of the town meeting. So that I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And I still would like to hear from Ms. O'Donnell and Mr. Heine.
Yes. Um. Yes, Kathleen, I think you had your hand up first, if you would like to join us. Welcome.
Thank you um for taking my uh my comments. Um, I looked at Mr. Dougherty's letter and I've listened to now two meetings of the planning board discussing this action plan. And I do have a practical solution is that you could state on the action plan that you are reserving the right to make changes to that action plan depending upon the things that need to be addressed as a result of the final form of the regulations. That's one sentence that could be added to the plan that just says, here, we're submitting this on time on the thirteenth, and we're reserving the right to make changes depending upon what happens with the final regulations. And I think that's a much better solution than sticking, trying to stick it to the HLC with, you know, uh, an antagonistic response. I think we should just say, listen, we know these regulations aren't final. Here's our best effort, and we're going to go ahead with that. And so I think this idea, for some reason, that people think that there's some question about whether the law is legal, that's been decided by the SJC. The zoning is legal. The Attorney General has the right to do the enforcement. And you have to remember that if we don't adopt something, it would be quite simple for the AG to go into court and get an order that enforces the zoning that we adopted a year ago. And nobody wants that result. So why not take the proper steps, comply with the obligation to submit an action plan? And as I said, and reserve the right to make changes to it, depending upon if you think that there's some sort of miracle that's going to happen with the trolley or whatever, fine, but you'll have the right, you'll have reserved the right, and that would be just adequate enough. And I think that shows our good faith, and I think that's an important thing to be doing these days because we don't have the best reputation at the moment. Thank you.
And I do agree that we want to demonstrate in whatever we decide to write that we are that we are trying to work with the state. We're not, um, you know, we understand the SJC has um determined that it is that the law, the statute um is legal and enforceable. Um, I think it's, the question is um the guidelines, which are now soon to become regulations. So thank you very much. And now I think there was an Doug Heine would like to speak also.
Um, good evening, everyone. Um, I had not planned to speak today, but it's it's when Mr. Fahy challenges attorneys, if there's any attorneys out there, you gotta figure at least a few of us are going to want to want to talk. And it's funny that I had written down um almost the exact comment, as Attorney O'Donnell said, which is to insert language in the action plan saying that we reserve all rights to amend this plan upon the final regulations being promulgated. That's an absolute way to reserve rights. And and this kind of in many ways kind of reminds me of the discussion from earlier this evening about, you know, wanting to change the language in the ADU article because we didn't want to set a precedent. Look, as a matter of practicality, it's not going to make a difference. If we don't follow the regulations, be they the emergency guidelines or the eventual regulations, we're going to get sued. And the argument is not going to hinge upon what language we use. It's going to hinge upon whether or not we got a trolley or a T or or whatever the case may be. Um, but that was kind of my my last point was was adding that language into the action plan, which I think keeps us from getting sued right now, which is my number one priority for the town, is not to get sued. What Mr. O'Donnell, I'm sorry, what Attorney O'Donnell is suggesting is going to get sued and write quick. Uh, that's not in anyone's interest. Let's keep our options open. I I also want, and I've heard Attorney O'Donnell speak a number of meetings now, and um.
I think you mean Mr. Dougherty, Attorney Dougherty.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Um, and and I appreciate his perspective and and I agree with a lot of um, his legal conclusions, but in my practice, you know, I tell people that just because a thing can be done doesn't mean it should be done, and you really have to look at things practically. And so just taking the nature of the emergency regulations themselves, I think the fair question that he has raised is are they in fact emergencies? And and I think you can make a very good argument and possibly have the the better end of the argument by saying they're not emergencies and they shouldn't be promulgated, and we can challenge them on that on those grounds. But but what's the point? And and the reason why I say what's the point is, within ninety days, we're going to have regulations that have been promulgated properly according that have been promulgated properly according to the APA and filed with the Secretary of State. And it's gonna be a moot point. So why even fight the battle that's going to be moot? It doesn't make any sense that when we're paying someone 940 bucks an hour, that can add up quickly. Some litigation may be a foregone conclusion. And, and I, I'm not happy about that necessarily, but, but maybe it needs to happen. And, and I guess I accept that on some level, but there's no sense in fighting something that, that we don't have to fight. I think the comment that I believe Mr. Fahey made last week about, you know, us not being able to get a fair shot in this, in, in the Commonwealth. I, I understand where he's coming from in saying that. And I've heard a lot of clients over the years say things like that when they, they get a decision that's not in their favor. And the SJC decision, I don't care how you wanna frame it. It, it took away the ability for us to really thrust a dagger into the heart of the MBTA Communities Act. It, it said the act was, was certainly constitutional, that it can be enforced, that, that the AG can bring an action to make us comply. So really now what we're left with is nibbling around the edges and saying, well, hey, let's, you know, attack what the eventual guidelines are going to be, regulations, anything. And we know what they're gonna be. They're gonna be the exact same thing that, that are in the emergency regs. I mean, so we shouldn't be surprised by this. We shouldn't be surprised that they're gonna ram it through within 90 days. Number one, they're required to do that under CMR. They have to replace emergency guidelines within 90 days, and they're gonna do that. And, you know, we're gonna say, oh, it's not enough time. I can't believe you're doing this. And they're gonna come back and say, well, yeah, but we, we spent two years asking for comments when we originally came out with the guidelines. And so we've kind of done that already. So the bottom line is, yeah, I agree. When you use the word fair, I don't know if I'd use that word, but we're not gonna get a shot that favors our position. Whether that's fair or not, I think it really doesn't matter what you call it. We're in a worse position. You can't deny that. We've got a target on our back. You can't deny that. The fact that emergency guidelines came out within, what, eight, nine days from the SJC decision? And the only changes to them from the prior guidelines was to specifically say that Milton, our trolley, is part, is, is within the category of a rapid transit stop. They're going for us. That's it. So, you know, as much as, you know, I hear the AG and the governor say, well, you know, we can talk this over and try and come up with a solution. We know that's not gonna happen. Let's put, let's realize, let's recognize the fact that the time for talk is over. And it's either gonna come down to, are we gonna have a plan that complies with the guidelines or not? You know, maybe that means that we have to engage in some type of 30A action, which, just for those of you, it's essentially if you disagree with things in, in regulations, you get a determination that's not in your favor, you can have that reviewed by a Superior Court judge. I've done a number of those, not particularly in land use, but I've done at least about a dozen of them over the years. And it's, it's a pretty narrow review. I mean, they look to see if there was some type of, you know, kind of, you know, strange procedure that went on that really deprives someone of a substantial right. But when it comes down to defining things, courts defer to administrative agencies. The SJC said that. The SJC specifically said that it's okay for administrative agencies to define things. And that's the way courts look at these things. So I think eventually it'll come down before a judge saying, hey, are we, you know, are we a rapid transit community or adjacent or, you know, it's gonna come down to whether or not the, you know, the, the trolley stops or a T stop or not. Well, you know, I, I think if we're hinging our hopes upon that, it's a long shot. And, and I think we have to be ready to come in with a plan, with a 25% plan. Whether or not we use it, I, I don't know. And I have my own feelings about whether that would be good or bad for the town. I don't relish the changes it would bring to, to my neighborhood, but it, it is what it is. And, and I think we have to be ready to have that implemented at a moment's notice. So please, don't fight the battles we don't have to. Try and conserve as much ammunition as we can for legal costs for battles to come because we're gonna wind up getting sued unless we do this in a, in a way such that we, you know, petition a Superior Court to, you know, change the definitions and engage in some type of 30A appeal. But that's gonna be it. It's not going back to the SJC or anything like that. Sorry to ramble, but again, I really didn't think about these comments ahead of time. Get the action plan in place. Keep us out of court and we'll, we'll do the best we can. Thanks, guys.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. Okay.
Just to clarify, I don't think any board member has said we shouldn't fill out the action plan. Correct?
I've never said that. I'm just trying to figure out the best way to do it. And that was interesting that we actually can go back to Superior Court and, and try to resolve the trolley classification. But anyway, I don't think that we are in a, I mean, I don't agree that we're in a worse position than we were before. I mean, we've got six months to comply and plenty of chances to, to, I shouldn't say argue, but you know, to try to get to the bottom of this. Meanwhile, I mean, how are we gonna fill out this action plan so we don't tie the town's hands?
So one thing I would say, Jim, is we don't have six months if we fill out an action plan that puts us out of compliance with the emergency regs. And that's what we understand the emergency regs are in effect. The action plan is due before the final regs are issued. So if we submit an action plan that's not compliant with rapid transit, then we will be out of compliance as of February 13th and we'll have that gap.
But the regs aren't even
You're, you're suggesting that the emergency regs don't apply, but HLC has told us they do apply. So as far as HLC is concerned, if we don't have an action plan that's compliant with the emergency regs submitted by February 13th, then we are out of compliance. They said it in their letter. And so we will be, how we fill out this form, we're either going to be in compliance or out of compliance as of February 13th. And so we will be subject to lawsuit if we fill out the form in a way that's inconsistent with the emergency regs, which is that we are rapid transit community.
And again, for clarification, and I'm not saying we should, I'm not taking a position if we should fight the emergency regulation because it's my understanding, one part of, of declaring an emergency regulation is to provide a statement for the reasons for filing it
We have an emergency.
To the Secretary of State, and they did not do that. And one of the reasons I think they did not do that is because they can't, because there is no zoning emergency. This, as you recall, this is all about zoning, as we've heard. It's not a construction mandate. So this is just zoning, as everyone has said for the past two years. So I think that's why HLC did not create or submit a statement to the Secretary of State. But I digress on that, and again, I'm not an attorney. And I do think we should fill out the, the action plan. I do think we should abide by the statute. I haven't wavered from that point in time. And so I don't know if now's a good time to go through the action plan.
Cheyenne, could you pull up the action plan? And that will be helpful for people who are watching also to sort of get an idea of what, what we're asked to fill out. Great, thank you. So would it be helpful for the board if we just sort of walk through and we fill out what we can right now? And I do think we need to have a conversation with Nick, the, you know, the select board and Town Council.
So what does that look like, Meredith, when you say have a conversation with? What does that look?
Well, I think we should, that we would send over, we're gonna work on the draft tonight. I think we should work on the draft to our, the best of our ability for that to, to Nick and and Town Council. And then determine, you know, do they want to make changes to this? But this would be what we would want to submit as the planning board.
Okay, so we're not actually having a true conversation?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we'd like to send it over and, you know, I'd like to get the thoughts of, you know, the Town Council and with the Select Board. The Select Board might agree with us on what we're wanting to submit. And, and, and if the Select Board decides, then, then we submit what we, what we agree on.
Okay, so just like the original action plan, we worked on the original action plan, the, the planning board with the planning department. And then, um, so that's the first step. So we're taking the first step right now.
Right.
And then it, so we don't have the authority to actually submit this. It goes to the Select Board and they decide whether to submit this or not? But we fill it out the way we want? Is that the way?
Yeah, let's, let's go through it because I think it, it does say the town. So I just, I, I wanna check with Nick and Town Council on that. So MBTA community name. Adam Milton.
Meredith, if you, if you go scroll up, back up a little bit to, I think to the question of who submits it. It says this form must be submitted by a municipal official with authority to act on behalf of the municipality. And I understand that's to be the town administrator. Is that, do you have a different understanding of that?
That is what, um, that is my understanding, yes. That, or, well, I, again, I want to get clarification on that. Can it be a representative of the planning board who's submitting this? We should, we should find out about that.
Yeah, because Tim submitted it before. He signed it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Cheryl, Cheryl points out, it makes it pretty clear if you're a city, it's signed by the mayor. If you're a town, it's signed by the town manager, if you have one, or a town administrator.
I don't think it, yeah, I don't think it allows for the planning board to submit it.
I don't think so, but
And this is drafted, this is slightly different than the last.
Yeah, because it says very explicitly right here for towns.
Are we just running through this or are we wanting to?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can run through and just have sort of our saved draft of what we'd like to share.
Have you spoken to the town administrator about the planning board working on this, Meredith?
Briefly.
And did he ask us?
When it first came, yeah, when it first came out.
Did he ask us for input?
Um, it was the understanding that the planning board was gonna be working on this.
He didn't necessarily ask us to work on it.
It was not a request. It was sort of
Okay, okay.
I guess I don't see why we wouldn't work on this. It came from our planning director last time.
And he sent it to us.
Yeah, it wasn't part of that plan. With the plea, you guys all worked on, on the
Cheyenne, you might have had, Cheyenne, you might have had more of a conversation with Nick on this.
Um, the only thing that we talked about was what was mentioned earlier, which was him signing that we would be certifying a compliant model. So for him to do that, it would have to be a certified model. So we didn't get too deep into it, but we did discuss that we would be working on it tonight.
So Cheyenne, so let me ask a clarifying question on that. Did he say it was his intention to submit an action plan that would be compliant with the emergency regulations?
He said that he has to sign a letter certifying compliance, but he can't sign that until we all get on the same page of providing a compliant model. So he can't, yeah, so that was the discussion.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The way, the way this reads, they're, they, and the way this is prepared, they're, they're asking you to regurgitate what they've already written.
This, this section of it, but if you get further into it, that's, it's not.
Well, maybe that's true, but can you, can you skip a section?
Well, let's not
Or maybe we can fill it out, you know, as an adjacent community, prompting a response from the EO HLC and maybe it forces a meeting.
Um, so it doesn't look like you can skip a section. They all have this red asterix. So, and we also can't save this document, so I'll have to start a separate document that we can edit as we go and then we can put the final in here. Cause we can't save this.
Cause is this what you're submitting online? Cause I went online and created, I created a document like I was somebody from a different town.
It's just the, the form on the website.
The mail-in, email, it's just what's on the website.
Yeah, so similar like when we did the ADU public comment letter, it's just, you go on the website, you fill out the information and then you submit your document. So.
So can we just then, since you can't move on, I think we should look at each of the questions before we answer any of them and just run through it that way first.
Yeah, dry run, just without putting any answers in it.
So, I mean, obviously the first one is, triggers a lot of things, but let's just not spend our time talking about number one at the moment. I don't think 1.2, let's run through the rest of it and see if there's agreement on any aspect of it.
On 1.1, I would think would be, we say C appendix.
1.1, the community name is just a town.
Just Milton.
So 1.1, C appendix.
Yeah, but you're, so you're, you're saying that Mr. Dougherty's advice is what you want to do. So let's put Mr. Dougherty's memo on the screen for all of who, people who are watching and residents who may want to watch this later have the benefit of Mr. Dougherty's memo.
Cheryl, before we do that, Cheyenne, I'm sorry to spin you in circles. I think what you started with is a really good process. Let's walk through this first and, you know, dry run. And we won't, probably better that it's almost 10 o'clock that we don't, you know, drill into tremendous detail on every one of these. But, um, you know, I agree with you. 1.1 is easy. We put Milton in. 1.2, probably one we should skip over. They're asking us to identify our category. 1.3, let's skip over it for now. 1.4, let's skip over it. 1.5, um, let's skip over that one. Let's skip over 1.6.
Well, even 1.5, I think nobody disagrees that there's MBTA commuter rail stations.
You're right.
No.
But then it's boundaries. They're not, they're not within our boundaries.
Correct.
That's clear.
That means 1.6.
Sorry, Sean, go ahead.
Is 1.6 a no?
No, that would be a yes.
Yeah, that's a yes. A little bit of commuter rail, okay.
Yeah.
A small amount.
1.7, someone's name, likely based on the form language above, it would be a town administrator. Uh, title, email, phone number, all pretty easy. The name of the municipal CEO, I, I assume that is to repeat Nick again. As the town administrator, mailing address is easy. He's basically described other members of the core team developing the multifamily zoning district.
Well, that seems like it'd be the planning board and consultants.
Yeah.
As it says here, right underneath the box.
Yeah. Um, that's, I guess, straightforward. So Section 2 Housing Overview.
Yep. Yep. Housing related goals or strategies?
Right.
Yes, that would be yes.
At least 15 units an acre? I don't think so as of right. We don't currently have any existing zoning districts that allow it by right.
Correct. That would be no.
Right.
So this would be no.
Yeah.
We do have a housing production plan.
Yeah.
We do have a master plan. We've been working on an overlay district in East Milton, so I would say yes. And I think this is.
We have open space and recreation plan. Yeah, we have a lot of.
I just want to go back to the how these were answered before. One second.
Yes, is this municipality currently working on any other?
Yeah.
For housing, I think we could list all the approved 40V projects.
Yeah.
As well as the approved, um, winter valley.
2.4 is yes, because we have.
We had a vote. Yeah.
It's yes, we receive state funding.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
From Mass Housing Partnership?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right.
I think what we were, had been thinking of, and I think it probably still applies, is a new zoning district. Whether it's base or overlay though, wasn't it overlay before?
Select all that apply.
Yeah.
Other zoning strategy, a new base.
Well, when it's, we haven't been talking about a 40R. Well, let's go from the beginning. Number A, we don't have one that already complies. We don't, we had not been talking about amending existing such that we would make them as of right, correct? So I don't think B would apply. We have not been discussing a 40R. So then D says a new base zoning district or districts. So base zoning means you're changing the underlying zoning. Um, so I,
So let's say A.
I think that's, it's not A though, Jim, because we don't have one.
It could be C because it was not, it's not, um, a new 40R, but it's other overlay zone.
Yeah, I would say C and D then, right?
C and E?
C and D.
Why wouldn't it be E also?
Could be E, I suppose. I don't know what it is, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice to leave our options open.
Well, I think in 3.2, what we discussed was our, our mixed use, not eliminating our business districts was important. So I'm looking at what we answered before. Non-housing priorities include mixed use development. Portions of our potential district are in existing business districts and other portions are in areas of town that have few commercial amenities. Another factor was affordability. Pedestrian and bicycle connections to transit. Transportation connections in portions of the district not the trans area, transit areas such as uh, bus lines, bike lanes, public realm. Street tree canopy. Impact of rezoning on municipal services, which I'm not sure we can do any longer. Preservation of existing open space. And we had, the town has a concern about the capacity of the Matapan Trolley and its ability to absorb new riders and achieve the goal of taking cars off the road. Town's also concerned about the Commonwealth's commitment to implementing the Matapan Trolley Transformation Project. Those improvements will be crucial to ensuring the trolley is able to support the potential new density that a 3A district will create. So those all seem the applicable.
Same, we could add those.
Yeah.
But that we also wanted to talk about, um, because it's become such a, a real issue is the healthcare capacity for hospitals, local hospitals.
Yep. So, uh, thanks for bringing that up because I mentioned that last time. So, um, as I mentioned, you know, the, um, the health department did send out a letter to five different entities requesting a, um, healthcare capacity audit. Um, in my understanding, at this point, they, you know, they haven't responded. Mara Healy and Andrea Campbell were two of the five. Um, so I would like to add that letter um, as another appendix. Also, I would like to add.
Or as an attachment, you mean?
An attachment, yep. Um, I would also like to add, and maybe it's, as I mentioned last week, you know, I'm on the climate action committee and we are talking about, um, you know, drought, flooding, wildfires. And in light of what's happening in California, um, I would like to add a letter about our concerns about wildfires. Um, the Blue Hills is about 2,000 acres. It takes up about 25% of Milton's land mass. And so I think it is a true emergency. Like if, if HLC thinks zoning is an emergency, I personally think that, um, healthcare capacity and wildfires are actually a really true crisis. Um, so I would like to add those two things, um, to it, if I can.
Cheryl, could you send, um, or actually Cheyenne, you probably have all of those, the list that, um, Cheryl?
It's in the folder. It's, it's that, um, document that's in the folder, Meredith.
Yeah. So Cheyenne, if you could share, if you're sharing these with, with Nick, um, to include that as well as what Maggie is suggesting.
Will do.
Okay, great.
And then along the lines of the mixed use development, I'd love to mention something about increasing our commercial tax base. Just because the town is so broke.
I think that was included in.
Was that?
I think that was included in one of the items that we had.
Yeah, I didn't see it. I'll read it again, though.
The commercial.
Well, actually.
Well, I'm talking about actually increasing our commercial tax base.
Through a commercial?
Yeah, through mixed use development, through whatever, but as long as it, we let them know that we're trying to increase our commercial tax base.
Well, as we discussed when we had that presentation with the consultant about the economic development, we, they're, one of the main priorities was making all of our non-conforming businesses, um, you know, not special permit, but make them as of right. So we have many, um, commercial businesses outside of our commercial districts. And to me, that's low hanging fruit. And I think we should, um, first step should make those all as a fright.
So let's, uh, scroll down further.
So I'm sorry, can you go back up to four?
Yeah, four is a timeline, which
Yeah, so.
There requiring task start and finish for each of, for each of, um, component.
So it seems to me, um, public outreach should be the first thing. And that's on their list as the first item. And that could be doing the forum that we postponed and trying to do it in February is difficult because we have um, school vacation and town meeting, but it, it seems to be that needs to be the first task.
Yeah, I don't think we should let public outreach slow us down. I, I've heard a lot from the public. And I think I have a good idea of where the zoning should go.
Jim, we have not had a public forum since the SJC decision came down. And I, I think that the, the public, um, is very, is going to be quite interested in what the town decides to do with this, given that decision. So I, I don't think you should, um, presume to know what the entire town wants to do now since that decision's been issued.
Yeah. I think we could push forward without it, but it's just one.
And I think we could back this out. July, you know, we have the July.
Um, if you want to back it out.
Yeah, if we have submit, you know, district compliance.
And we just have to make sure that, um, the public outreach forum was rescheduled because another big um, initiative in town was going on in that same night. So it wasn't just like the planning board decided willing to just not have it. I personally asked if we, uh, if it could be rescheduled once we knew the outcome, um, because you know, Mastod was having a big, um, public forum on, um,
The Rotary.
28 Rotary. It wasn't like we just disregarded it, just.
So I, I think we should put placeholder in this and I, I think this needs to be determined. Because we can work as fast or slow as, you know.
So one thing I would say is in the prior one, it said public outreach would be ongoing throughout the process. So that might be the same best approach here. Another thing was procuring consultant services, uh, which we still have done. So maybe uh, that could be one of the, we've already procured consultant services. Develop the zoning, apply the compliance model, a planning board hearing and special town meeting. Those were the short answers in our prior application. Those seem to be also good answers for these. As far as the dates. This has to be adopted by mid-July.
Right.
You would need to. What we had before is December 4th was the town meeting. We had planning board hearing mid to late October. Um, and the compliance model. We had complete in the schedule. It said in August. So we don't have as much time as we had in this because it also had developed the zoning in March, March through September. Uh, I would say, I mean, we've been working on zoning, so it, that's been on, we could say that that's been ongoing, just like the consultant services.
Yeah, I think all of this has been ongoing. I mean, we haven't, we haven't had our planning board hearings because we haven't, we don't have a final.
But we don't actually have districts and a set compliance model, but we've been working on them. So it seems to me we'd have to have the compliance model and the zoning ready by the first of June, if we wanted to have a compliant article voted on by town meeting by mid-July.
What kind of meeting are we going for? I'm sorry, Maggie.
It would have to be a special.
It doesn't have to be a special, yeah.
Um, so as you know, that the, um, that 23 bills have been already filed with the state legislature to either repeal it or amend it, you know, because there were so many significant concerns and opposition. Um, and there are other ongoing legal challenges. Um, so do we know? And again, this is a general question because I don't really know too much about the state legislator's schedule. Do you know, do we happen to know when those would come up?
I don't.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I just found it interesting there are 23 bills filed.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, that was my point earlier, you know, so what do you do about that?
Proceed with caution, is what you do.
Right.
Okay. So I, I think we should move through this and not get too way down because I think, um,
So public.
Until we have exactly our action plan, we're, yeah.
So if we said public outreach ongoing, consulting engaged, compliance model in, ongoing or in progress. And so we could say develop zoning April. Compliance, final compliance model, May. Or I don't know what the order of those would be. Compliance, maybe the compliance model, April and the zoning, May. Maybe we want early May for that.
I think that's reasonable.
Planning board hearing.
Yeah, so the hearing. Month before, the hearing should be June, I guess zoning, May. Compliance model, April.
And, and do we, in each of these short answers, as, um, people suggested, do we type in a statement that says we are reserving the right to make changes?
I think that makes sense wherever, however it's deemed best place to put it.
I would think would be in every answer.
So I think if we said early April in the compliance model, early May for the zoning, early June for the public hearing. So that gives February, March to work on the compliance model. Testing the districts, do public outreach two months. And considering there's February vacation in there, I think that seems, and the April vacation in there, I think that seems appropriate.
I agree. I think that's.
Is that the? Is that the last part of the?
Cheyenne, can you scroll down a little further? Yeah. Okay, let's see attached time statements. And this is where we would have C appendix referred to. For our comments, yeah. And the other documents that Maggie was suggesting, the letter to the governor.
So what are you suggesting goes in here?
Any documents that we want to attach, including our appendix and the comments that we would provide? Did anyone have anything else that they wanted to add up above?
What? Excuse me, Cheyenne, were you able to take note of what we discussed on these answers?
Yes, I've been writing them down.
So that you could do a paper draft, since you can't do the. So that you could do a paper draft, since you can't do the. Okay.
I'll be doing that tomorrow.
Okay. So, you know, it really comes down to you know, whether as we said earlier, we want to put in the action plan that we will be compliant and reserve our right to amend, or whether we s- we take that other approach, which would put us out of compliance. And I, I really think that's um that's something that the public should be able to understand and, and provide comment to. Um, and you know, there's several meetings tonight, including the select board and fire station building committee, and there might be others. And how many people are able to see this? Um, it seems to me some public input ought to be sought before this is submitted on February thirteenth.
I, I agree, yeah.
I wonder if we.
I, I just want to, I just want to come back. You're suggesting that public input uh for us to fill out the action plan?
Public input on whether um people feel as if, or residents feel as if the town should continue to pursue a path that's non-compliant with the, with the regulations, with the emergency regulations, because if not, then they have to be prepared to allocate funds, you know, to prepare for lawsuits that challenge it. And in a time when um the select board is discussing tonight, you know, an override of substantial dollars. I think the public needs to be aware of the financial implications of these decisions. If we, you know, make a recommendation as a, as a board to pursue a path that's non-compliant.
Well, there's also, there's also financial ramifications to to creating a plan that might really harm the town in the future. I, I, I actually disagree. The public's, obviously, they can communicate with the planning board, the select board, the town administrator as much as they possibly want. I think at this point, um, because what are you going to do if you have a hundred people that send in a comment? And in fifty uh, you know, have one position and fifty have another position, how do you make a decision? Um, my opinion is we're an elected board, the select board is an elected board, we have a town administrator. Um, I think this is in our hands now, we have to make a decision, and I'm not precluding anybody from sending an email to the planning board uh or to any of us. They have every right as a resident of the town to do so. So I expect since you've invited it, you, we're going to get those, and that's fine. Uh, but I don't think that we're going to be able to make a decision based on the public input.
I would hope you would consider public input. I mean, it's.
Cheryl, 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 don't, don't.
Incredibly important thing. We just talked about it for one hour tonight.
Don't mischaracterize what I just said. They're entitled to submit anything they want, but what are you going to do? Uh, take a, take the vote and make a decision? You know, if you have an overwhelming response that's, that uh supports um something that you don't agree with, do you think you're going to change your mind?
My point is that this is something that's been discussed. There's been no public discussion about what the town should do since the SJC issued their decision. Zero. It's unbelievable. I can't believe that there hasn't been a public forum either by the planning board or the select board, the town administrator, that explains the decision, explains what the town's options are, and and has people, there's so many people who are wondering what comes next. Where's the leadership? And so for us to say for tonight that this action plan is the next step, and it's been spoken about for one hour tonight, other than Mr. Dougherty's memo at the last meeting, I just think that that's not uh nowhere near enough of a communication with the residents of the town who will be impacted by whether we continue to be non-compliant.
Well, Cheryl, you know that this has been a changing, this is, you know, the emergency regulations that just came out, then, you know, then we had a public hearing process. This has been sort of a moving target. This is not, you know, not because anyone has had full information. I, I think we've been waiting for information, and I think that's why, you know, we cannot give information to the town until the town has received the information. We just, you know, we, we just found out yesterday, there's a, that there's, you know, public hearing processes, you know, are, are just um we just received that we have twenty days now. That, that has just been put on to us, and, and so we are having to react and having to deal with the information that we have at hand, but it's um, this has been this process with HLC has just been very backwards, and
I mean.
We're, yeah, we're asked to do something that we don't have, we, we don't have a final comment period, and we're asked to do an action plan. So regardless of whatever we intend to put in, I do intend to add the comments. I would like to vote um to add the comments that Tom has provided because there, it's not, it's not about what we want to happen. It's about what is legal, what is absolutely the law, and that's what I'm trying to follow. Um, I'm trying to be compliant with the law, but you know, the way this is proper, this is, you know, improperly being promulgated, in my opinion, um, to try to have an action plan before, before.
So on that, on that note, on the legality, I think we have to rely on town council.
Absolutely.
We can't rely on any particular resident, whether it's Mr. Dougherty, um, Ms. O'Donnell, Mr. Heine, or whomever. We have to rely on town council. And so whether it's legal or not, whether the guideline, whether these emergency regs are um, or properly um, promulgated, I guess, uh, you know, in terms of Mr. Heine saying, what's the point in fighting them when the final regs are going to be out in ninety days? You know, I think um, what we spoke, what he's suggested and um, you know, and what Catherine O'Donnell suggested was show good faith, and so show good faith um is that we um intend to be compliant, and if uh so, you know, there hasn't been any decision made about what next to do on any legal front, and so we're left with, are we going to be compliant or not? And um, and I vote for being compliant, and I don't think we should include a legal strategy that hasn't been um put forth by town council. I, I just think that's not appropriate.
Yeah, I, I agree.
My, my, uh, I, Cheryl, I, I just, Meredith, I just want to go back to, you know, I, the discussion I was having with Cheryl a few moments ago. EOHLC violated, right, we all know this, the Administrative Procedures Act. They're the ones that have created this aggressive timeline. You know, they're the ones that established the date of the thirteenth of February. They're the ones that, you know, have issued emergency guidelines, which to me is quite strange, given that they've been found in violation of a procedural process, that they're just ignored by issuing emergency guidelines. And they created the deadline of the thirteenth. If, if there's anything that's precluding the public from being involved, it's not the planning board. It's the state creating these timelines that are so aggressive in placing a, uh, placing a date for uh an action plan of the thirteenth of February. That's what's preventing the kind of engagement that you're asking for. That's what, fifteen days away from now?
Thank you. We do have one hand up um from the public. It looks like a phone number ending in zero, one, one. If you'd like to add a comment, I just want to make sure I, I'm not sure who this is. If you could introduce yourself. State your name and address for the public, please. And your comment.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Hi, Meredith. Uh, this is Mark Cristo calling from Seventeen Waldo Rock.
Welcome.
If I could, hello, everybody. I haven't seen you guys for a little while. Did want to put a few thoughts out there, if I could. Um, I've been listening just a little bit tonight, but I think any future planning board action must not tie us to the rapid transit classification. Uh, as, as you know, I feel we need to pursue the reclassification. I want to go look at two things. I want to look first at the Matapan Trolley. We know that Trolley is the only rail service in the MBT arsenal that operates a single vessel with severe limitation due to its minimal carrying capacity. It's got the least carrying capacity of all. And that's complicated by the fact that it's, it is the only vessel that does not transport downtown. It's limited to local stops only. It ceases its operation outside of a rapid transit station. That's Ashmont Rapid Transit's determinus, which it only feeds into, just like a bus. And let's not forget that this trolley has anemic ridership and is without the possibility of high ridership and volume capacity in the infrastructure rapid transit. Restrictions that could not support such an aggressive housing agenda. Besides that, you know, we know that the SJC came out with a ruling, and they've said that HLC did not properly promulgate their uh regulations, but we also know that there were many missteps in my description that LHC presented to this board with different members back in twenty twenty-one, starting in twenty twenty-one, when they came out with the draft guidelines. You know, they rebranded that top tier classification just weeks before that deadline. I think it was March of twenty twenty-two. They didn't give a deadline extension for people to do their due diligence to uh, to really assess the situation. And then after the fact, when they went through the process, what were there, five communities, I think, in total that were, that were uh relinquished of their responsibility zoning regulations, zoning requirements under that rapid transit top tier classification? And there were eighty downgrades based upon different classification changes, et cetera? So they've made many missteps, not just the one that the SJC called them out. So it's really going to be difficult, I think. So go forward playing by their rules alone, without at least bringing these things to the attention uh of, 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 of legal counsel when, when you're, when you're dealing with this. But, you know, I just feel that at this point, we've got to move forward, and we can't be moving forward at twenty-five percent classification associated with the rapid transit classification. So I just want to put that back out there for consideration. Uh, that said, thank you very much.
Thank you. That's great.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay.
So, just a couple words, Meredith? I mean.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I just feel that there has been plenty of public outreach. I mean, we got two great lawyers tonight. Um, in Kathleen O'Donnell and Doug Heine, that had great input. And, you know, I happen to think that Mr. Dougherty's advice is a little bit better. Um, but I think this board is capable of filling out an action plan and making a decision as to what we want to do. Whether it's twenty-five or ten, or, or, you know, whatever we choose, but I think I, I'm skeptical that we're going to come to an agreement on an action plan without sort of presenting a couple different ones. And I don't really know how to do it. I mean, I would I would love to sit down with Mr. Dougherty and, and just sign, figure this thing out, attach his appendix to exactly what he suggests, and see what happens with the EOHLC. Now, others on the board might not want to do that. So I don't know if we have two separate action plans filled out that we vote on, or, or, I mean, I don't know how we propose taking the plunge from this out, but I think we should decide tonight what we want to do. So next meeting, have to call a meeting in a couple of days and vote on something and, and, and get it in. I mean, I think it's worth doing.
Well, either way, I think we're going to need a follow-up meeting to this. We're not going to.
And this is a action that the town administrator, we talked about, has to take, and whether that town administrator is going to want to get the select board's opinion on this, you know, I, I, I don't think the planning board should think that we're acting in isolation on this, so I think um, you know, my suggestion would be to to complete the draft in a draft form, as Cheyenne said she would do yesterday, and then share with the town administrator that there's um you know, Mr. Dougherty has this memo, there's been concern about whether it represents town council's view. Um, there's been concern about the fact that the um, this is due before the regulations are uh promulgated. Um, and that there's, you know, um there's maybe some agreement amongst the majority about not wanting to be uh committed to a compliant model based on the emergency, but it's not unanimous. And then, you know, um and let him take that input, because it's not our decision to actually to vote that this is the actual plan. It's to provide uh our input and guidance. That's my view.
Our decision to vote on a plan to, to put forward to the select board, right?
Have they asked for it?
We would need clarification for that.
So aren't we the planning board?
Well, we are the, that's exactly right. So.
They didn't ask for the, sorry, go ahead.
I guess nobody's asked for anything from us, right? So why are we doing anything? They didn't ask for it. Hey, let's just blow it off.
No, I just meant that the, the uh action plan being, needing to come from the town administrator who works under the direction of the select board, doesn't work under the direction of the planning board. That was my reason for saying that.
Oh, I, yeah, I think the action plan needs to be submitted by the town administrator, but I think it's got to be generated by the planning board.
Correct.
That's the way I take it.
So it is the planning board's responsibility to put force zoning. So perhaps there wasn't a dr- a uh, a formal directive. However, we all know it. So let's not kid ourselves, let's not um, you know, confuse the public. We know that it's our responsibility to do this. So we don't have, we shouldn't be arguing that point. We just need to do it.
So one thing that I would say is, if it does require other input, when what the planning board is deciding to do is submit something that says we're not going to comply with the emergency regulations, because your intent is not to comply with the rapid transit community, and therefore you're going to submit a plan that's going to keep us out of compliance and make us ineligible for grants.
I just agree that we're saying, I, I don't think we're going to say that we're not going to comply.
So are you going to check the rapid transit on that form?
I, I think we're going to leave it open, and I think we need to have a discussion with, and we need to open the door for a conversation with, with HLC, is what I feel.
Correct. And we are, just to clarify, we are not out of compliance at this moment in time. We should be asking for reimbursement of any grants that were uh denied to us. One grant in particular has read me the wrong way, is the, the grant um for um infrastructure for our disabled. Now, I don't know if you all know, but I grew up with a severely disabled sister. I am very sympathetic to the disabled, and for that reason alone, I called um that grant um issuer, and that really annoyed me. I shouldn't have to be doing that. So that grant should be also looked at to be reinstated. Um, so I, I think, Cheryl, we all know we want to be compliant with the statute. Um, the public does need to be aware of all the financial ramifications of everything in this town. And we know that they're looking for a ten million dollar override, and we are not saying to keep things private or out of the public. We meet how many times for how many hours? We get written about on social media, not always in a great light. We get written about in um the Milton Times, just today, and you know, whatever that Commonwealth Beacon, we were quoted in that. So everybody knows what's going on. The public has had ample opportunity. They know where to find me. I don't, I'm not hidden away anywhere. Um, I'm a huge proponent of transparency, but I'm also a huge proponent of getting things done. I think right now we just need to get things done.
Right. So so this would be, so either we can, we can complete the draft, we can have Cheyenne sort of start filling this in. I would like to see the comments added, no matter what we, what is sent in. I think no one can disagree with what Tom has stated, but you know, obviously, we would want town council's opinion. Um, but I think the comments.
So Meredith, the question, we, I had asked to put those comments up on the screen tonight that didn't happen. Are those available for the public to see? Are they posted on the? Are those available for the public to see? Are they posted on the website under MBTA zoning?
They're in our Planning Board folder, which can be accessed through the Planning Board website.
And has Town Council seen them, that memo? And has Nick Milano seen the memo?
Yes, I sent it to Nick.
I think just an opinion, but Meredith, you have the chair. Before we put, you know, Mr. Doherty's, what he prepared out there, should we check with Mr. Doherty and make sure he's? I assume he's going to be okay with it, but just seems like that would be fair to him.
He's got his hand up, actually.
Oh, yes, he is. Mr. Doherty, if you would like to unmute yourself and please feel free to speak up on this issue. You're still muted.
There you go.
Oh, there you are.
Okay, sorry. Yes, absolutely, it should be a public. And let me say one last thing, because anyone who attended the prior meeting that I spoke at, I mentioned also that, to the extent that there are, you know, members of the public, residents and all, who, you know, firmly believe that the 25%, you know, classification is really something that should be prioritized or pursued, pursued. My, my view is different in terms of the, the legal analytics. Having said that, as I mentioned earlier, this Planning Board has worked so hard on each of the two different aspects. One, the compliance with respect to the HLC's mandate. And secondly, looking at the, I'll call it the proximity to the commuter rail stations, right? So one of the, one possibility which you ought to at least consider, although I, I would absolutely not agree that the, I think it was well said, the, the commuter rail station modality is absolutely compliant with the statute. Okay? So having said that, there, you could, you could consider, given all the work you've already done, pursuing for the purposes of a vote by, that, you know, the town residents, both. That is to say, to the extent that it may be that, and I don't agree that the Town Council can't challenge the, the regulations. That's in fact what the SJC said, that the regulations are unenforceable, they have to be properly done. And furthermore, at, at page 13 of their decision, they said, "In to the extent that the town feels that those aren't properly adopted, it can, it can challenge them." Just as it said, and I want to say this clearly and slowly, page 23, footnote 23, the SJC said, "We have not taken a position or analyzed the application to Milton of the, of the statute. That still remains, therefore, and even said, it could be pursued down in the lower court." So I don't want to go on, but I do think that to the extent that it is, you know, very strongly suggested that, that, that whether it's to save money or whether it's to do the, do the only thing that is somehow mandated, which I don't agree with, you could pursue both. You, you know, you've already done so much work. Having said that, I think it would be, I think it would be unfortunate and, and problematical not to at least pursue the application of the statute on a commuter rail adjacency. It's so simple and so clear. The math is right in the statute, in the statute. And the statute, and I'll finish now, the statute has priority in terms of analytical and, and legal import over the regulations. To the extent that the statute is specific and applies to Milton so simply and clearly than the, than to the, than is to Milton, that's, that's the focus. So, so please do put that, it's, as you know, I provided the document last night that I'm talking about, because I had a draft on the, on the 26th, and then the letter came in from the, from the Secretary of the EO HLC. And so I simply had the first paragraph that added that. So I'm talking about it, and you, and it was provided, and Mr. Milano has it, and, and you all have it. It's that January 28 document. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So Cheyenne, if you could put that up on the website, just because it is right now, sort of, it's 10:40. So I want to make that, you know, available for the public.
Can I just make one comment about the commuter rail, the application of the statute, and the land areas? The land areas that are within that half mile, those commuter rail stations on the map, or a lot of those are single-family homes, and you're applying 15 units an acre on those single-family homes. And those neighborhoods haven't been reached out to at all to say that your, your properties are, are potentially in a, in these districts. And when we did this zoning last year, the Planning Department had a monthly meeting in which, public forum, in which people were invited to come and listen, learn, and provide their comments. And so if you're talking about new districts and you think that we don't need any more public comment on, on those new districts, I completely disagree with that.
I, I haven't said they don't need
Oh, I'm sorry, not, not addressed to you, Mr. Doherty, sorry. That was addressed to the board, sorry, fellow board members.
Sorry, and as, and as you yourself know better than, as, because you're so very, I think, articulate and knowledgeable about the, the regulations. Regulations even say that half, at least half of that could be zoned, that that multifamily zoning could, could be located elsewhere. And another part of the regulation said, actually, if it's, if it's below a certain number of units, which it is, it could be, it could be located anywhere. So
Mr. Doherty, you, you understand too that that's in the, in the regulations or in the guidelines, not in the statute, right? So the statute is pretty clear that it says a half a mile, but the guidelines, we say the guidelines aren't properly promulgated. So that's where I have some conflict with the, with the approach. So.
But I think it can, you, you look at the statute, and the statute gives you the, the norm. And then you can talk with the HLC about whether with respect to the flexibility that they had, in other respects, they want to do that. But the, but the HLC is bound by the statute, and you start there. That's all, that's all, I think. Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to say, and, and now, thank you.
Thank you. So I think Cheyenne will, will communicate sort of where we are, you know, on our draft, you know, sort of where we're, we're looking to go with this, and get further opinion from Town Council, from the Select Board. I don't know how they're just, they were also discussing this this evening, so I don't, they're meeting at the same time. So I don't know how their discussions went, but we'll get caught up with the chair and with Nick tomorrow. And we'll have to have another meeting on this. So as, because we do want to respond with something by the 13th, so we will, we will need another meeting prior, but I'll have Cheyenne send that out to see, you know, when we can have a follow-up meeting, and where should we, where where we should go with this. So. Any other comments from the board before we have a motion to adjourn? No other comments? Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, rule call. Ashawn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie? And myself? Yes. All right, thank you so much. Good evening.
Good night.